Good evening and welcome to the Murfreesboro City School Board Meeting. At this time, we will ask you to please stand. We'll have Mr. Gary Anderson to lead us in the pledge of allegiance and a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. May be seated. Okay. We'll ask that all cut their cell phones off for our meeting, please. We'd like to welcome all that are in attendance. And first thing on the agenda, we'll have the approval of our agenda. Some move?
Second.
I didn't hear you.
Can I raise the items?
Yes, ma'am. Under the agenda, we were going, we're going to switch item A and B. Under information and reports. Is there anything else that you all see on the agenda that you'd like to either take off or switch around? Here are none. We've had a motion and a second. All in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Thank you. Well, now, Dr. Tucker with communications.
Thank you very much. And I'm not sure if you want me to do this one, but I'm honored to have an opportunity to introduce and to, to celebrate the selection of Dr. Linda Gilbert as the permanent director. And there she is over there. And this is truly an honor to have an opportunity to do that. Congratulations also to our board chair, chairman, chair lady, Mary Wade, who will serve as an at-large member of the Tennessee School Board Association's Board of Directors. That's an honor. We... (laughter) We will have a presentation now regarding the Fall 2009 BEP, I'm sorry, BEP Nissan Mini Grant awarded by the Chamber of Commerce, BEP representatives Lee Rinick and Nissan representatives Susan Brennan and Stephanie Valdez Striede.
I'm sorry, I'm really short. We at the BEP would like to thank Nissan for their continued support of the teacher mini grant program, and they have come to us tonight to present the check. We just had the mini grant award ceremony where we gave the mini grants away earlier this month. And so if we would just, Susan has a little bit to say and we'll pass the check.
And we really enjoy working in partnership with the Chamber we at Nissan do. And I was fortunate to be at the breakfast and the, just the quality of the courses and the, the educational opportunities the teachers are presenting to the students was outstanding. So again, we really enjoy doing this and we want to present you the check tonight and continue the partnership.
Actually, Dr. Tucker, would you come up and we're going to get a picture taken. And Mary, would you come?
Okay.
And Susan's graciously going to take the picture for us. And actually, Linda, why don't you come up to just round out the whole...
Well, officially, you were here.
Yeah. Right. Come on. Come on. Come stand next to me. Come over here.
Excuse me.
And Chair Lady Wade.
I'm here.
Want to take one more? Oh. Sorry, I didn't know that was going to be that much of a production.
I also wanted to say, take just a short minute because it's been a while since I have spoken to you all. But I have put at each place a gift from the BEP to each of you. And also, a short report on basically what the BEP has done for Murfreesboro City Schools. And since we both work with both school systems, we did something similar last year for the county schools and wanted to do this for you this year since I wasn't at this meeting last year, and I apologize, I was sick. But what we did was, we wanted to figure out what your return on investment was, what you all pay the BEP and what you get back for it. And the way we look at that is we look at each student that participates in our programs, each teacher and each counselor that participates in our programs, and what it costs for us per that person. And then we take what you guys pay us and do a regular ROI on it. So that's what we did versus when we started and what we've done since we've added programs and done more and more programming that reaches down to kindergarten. So I just wanted to leave that off with you. And I don't want to go through the whole thing, I know you have a busy schedule, but that was one of the main things I wanted to let you know, that we did a return on investment for you. And a list of some of the programs. And there's also in the packet, a list of our programs, our website, and other opportunities for teachers in the system. And I, I hope you will take more advantage of it. And we thank you so much for your time and your support. And I don't know if anybody has any quick question?
I have a comment.
Okay.
I would just like to thank you, Lee Rinick and the Chamber and Nissan for your continued amazing support of education in Murfreesboro City and Rutherford County. You all make really great things happen in classrooms every day. And thank you.
Thank you so much. And have a great meeting and Merry Christmas to all of you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. We appreciate the support that our schools are receiving. And now we will continue with our communications and I will put my glasses on again. We had to do some choreography up there, so I had to put the glasses aside. And now to continue, the snow report. Inclement weather communication. And this is from ESP and it has designated the following. Black Fox and Hobgood will go to Bradley. The Discovery School, Mitchell Nielsen Primary and Mitchell Nielsen Elementary will go to Northfield. Kason Lane goes to Scales. John Pittard goes to Irma Segal. And Bellwood Bowden Preschool stays open. And this is from ESP, so that parents will be aware of the snow schedule. Local city cable three, WGNS Radio, and major television stations two, four, and five and six will be called to announce a change in school hours. An alert now message will be sent out by the central office to notify parents of school closings. And now we'd like to give congratulations to Hobgood Elementary School for recognition as a Title I Distinguished School. And at this time, I'd like to ask if the principal, Ms. Sales, and her staff and faculty would come to the podium here and bring us a few words as to how you obtained this, this honor, this outstanding honor. The school? All right, faculty and staff. The school will be awarded $7,500 in conjunction with this honor. And each state nominates two schools for their success in closing the achievement gap. And we appreciate the work you all are doing for children. Thank you so much for giving us the opportunity to share with you this award. Since 1996, the National Title I Distinguished Schools Program has honored schools all across the country for their innovation in helping Title I populations achieve high academic standards. The purpose of the Title I Distinguished School Recognition Program is twofold. First, they identify schools that ensure that all children have access to effective instructional strategies and challenging academic content. And secondly, they identify schools that demonstrate success in ensuring that all children, particularly disadvantaged children, make significant progress in learning that content. Each state may choose two schools for national recognition. One school will represent the Title I schools that have exhibited exceptional student performance for the past two to three years. And the second school will represent the state's Title I schools that have made the most progress in significantly closing the achievement gap between student groups. On November the 12th, I received an email from the State Department informing me that Hobgood was eligible to be considered for the Title I Distinguished Schools Award for making the most progress in significantly closing the achievement gap between student groups. We were told that a representative from the State Department would make a site visit to our campus to determine the attributes of success and also to look at the effectiveness of our data. Some of the items on, items on the instrument were the teaching and learning based on state standards, the use of research-based instructional strategies, the opportunities for all students to achieve the professional development, the coordination of programs, the partnerships in the community, and the many ways we use data to drive our instruction. After the visit, on November the 20th, we got a phone call that told us we were chosen as the National Title I Distinguished School in closing the achievement gap for the state of Tennessee. Will be recognized on, at the National Title I Conference in Washington DC in January 2010. And needless to say, we are thrilled to be recognized for all our efforts. And I am thrilled to be part of such a fantastic team that stands with me. Congratulations to Hobgood, to the faculty, staff, the principal, and especially the children. Thank you. Kristy Maul, sixth grade teacher at the Discovery School, has been awarded a $915 grant from the National Girls Collaborative Project to teach robotics to girls after school. I don't know if she's here, so we'll ask her to stand. Hobgood, sixth grade teacher, Chick Nitter, will participate in the NASA Explorer Schools Weather on Earth and Other Planets Professional Development Activity at the National Science Teachers Association Conference in Philadelphia in March of 2010. And this is sponsored by NASA, so we want to say congratulations there. Mitchell Nielsen Primary is proud to announce that Dr. Dedrick Messenger and Mr. Richard Alexander have been chosen as WGNS's Good Neighbor of the Week for their work in establishing the faculty basketball game that provided donated canned goods for the Family Resource Center. Also thanks to the principal, Chad Fletcher, and the staff at Kason Lane for hosting the Murfreesboro City Schools has received a $12,000 grant from the Second Harvest Food Bank for the backpack program, which provides food, and it has already started, for 100 students to take home on the weekends. We want to say thanks to, this was an additional one that was called in. We, we just found out about this award for Kohl's Department Store had given to the, to the Community Outreach Program and Sandy, Candy Clifford is the one that told us about this. And it'll be, it's a $500 grant that they received for the Santa workshop and also for the holiday giveaway, $500. So we want to say thank you to them also. And now Ms. Wade.
Ready? Ms. Hopper?
In case the teachers slip out from Hobgood, they have school tomorrow. But I just would like to compliment all of them for the great job that they've done. Ms. Sales for her leadership and the wonderful job you guys are doing over there. Thank you very much. It's much appreciated by all of us. And we know what a difficult job you have in the teaching profession and we certainly appreciate everything you're doing.
You're an amazing group of educators. You're just awesome. That's quite an award. Thank you. Thank you for that.
And I made it just in time. Because I am so impressed and I'm so proud of Hobgood. I'm assuming we're talking about the blue ribbon?
Right.
That's just, it just brings us all, it's so much honor. And where are the Hobgood people?
They're all right there.
Yeah. Okay. Have they, have they already been?
Yeah.
Okay. Well, I just gotta do it myself. I'm just, I'm just so impressed. Y'all are amazing.
Thank you, Board. And thank you, Hobgood. Consent items, is there a motion to approve the consent item?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
There's been a motion and a second. All in favor, sign of aye?
Aye.
Thank you. Action items?
The first action item you have is approval of the contract with Dr. Linda Gilbert. And I've given you all a copy of a draft document. If the Board wishes, I can go through each clause individually. If you have any issues or changes you would, are going to recommend for the clause, I'd ask that you bring that up as a motion for discussion. And then we'll vote on each clause individually if you have changes. If you do not have changes, we'll just skip right past that clause. Everybody have their contract in front of them? The first clause deals with the term of the contract. Dr. Gilbert has indicated that she would like to start on January 4th of 2010. And that does coordinate with Dr. Tucker's contract with us. So the other issue on this clause that you would need to decide, that I have not filled in at this point, is the term of the contract. The contract can, under state law, can go as long as four years. And I have researched the, the history of the last contract with the last director was typically done in three-year increments. So I'll open that for if you, to discuss what term you would like to be placed in the contract.
Dr. Andrews?
Do you have a record of, of how many years the first contract was with Mrs. Mathis?
Yes, the first contract in 1998 was for one year. And the 99 contract started a three-year contract every time after that.
Ms. Duggan?
The first contract that was just a year with previous director, was that on an interim basis or?
It, it was not clear if it was. She was a current employee. And I know Mr. Hopper or someone that was on the Board at that time may be able to speak better to those issues. I just know that she was a current employee and then was appointed to that position. And the first three-year contract starts in 99, but she was appointed in 98 to the position.
She was not appointed as an interim.
I agree.
Board, do you have any other discussion on whether you want it to be a one year, two year, a three year? Or is there a motion so we can get past the term of the contract?
I'd, I'd like to move that the first contract be for one year and then we might consider four years after that. Is it four years that we can do?
Yeah, the maximum under state law is four years.
Is there anyone else with?
Do you want a second to that motion?
Well, I can. Is there, Ms. Duggan?
I'd really like to see us go ahead and give her a four-year contract to begin with. I think that if we look at the rationale that we have shared about the need to have consistency and to be able to begin to just jump right in and move full steam ahead, and even the rationale that Dr. Gilbert has shared with us and what she shared in her interview, I think we need to show our full support in that we know we're in this for the long haul, for the sake of the students. And I'd really like for us to consider a four-year contract. I'd also like for there to be some discussion, this would not be part of a motion, but some discussion of maybe having Dr. Tucker to stay for maybe two to three days at least. I know they're already having conversation, but just so there'd be that opportunity to have more in-depth dialogue.
I think we were after a sec.
Okay. I was going to address the discussion about the transition. That's later on in the agenda, so we'll discuss that at that point.
Thank you. We were after a second for the first motion. Is there a second for the first motion?
I'll second it. I'm, I'm sorry.
Well, I was going to ask for a discussion because we've had some. Is there any more discussion?
Yes, I'd like to see a little longer contract than that. I'd like to see somewhere between the two, a compromise maybe, not a one year and not a four year, maybe a two-year. You know, with one year, I almost feel like you just hardly get started. And so at least maybe a two-year contract to, as a compromise between the two, to give a, a really good start. And...
I'd certainly be willing to listen to that. I, my, what I think is going to happen is that we are going to have Dr. Gilbert as our director for many years. And I think that when a year is up, or two years whenever her contract is up, that assuming that she does the kind of job that we think she's going to do, we may want to improve her contract quite a bit. Because I, you know, we're, I, I'm assuming, you know, at this point, she doesn't have the experience of a director, but at that point she will. And I can see where it might benefit her perhaps to have a shorter contract as well.
Ms. Hopper?
I think we need to, remember, we're actually starting this contract in the middle of the year, so whatever we do probably is going to need to go for a year and a half or two and a half years or whatever to get to, to the end of the school year. But the, one thing that, that, this is not in the form of a motion, but I guess for discussion, is as I see all of the information coming out of the state, it's talking about moving to teacher performance pay, that I personally would be willing, at the end of, say, a two and a half year contract, to have a substantial bonus paid at the end of that two and a half years, assuming we're meeting the state testing requirements. I'm thinking in terms of maybe 15% of salary, which would be about $15,000.
Now, can you repeat that again?
Let's say if we had a two and a half year contract, at the end of that period of time, if we're meeting the state test requirements, that I would be in favor of paying a one-time cash bonus of maybe 15% of compensation.
I'd like to amend my motion to make it for two and a half years. If that's all right with Mrs. Phillips?
And you willing to second?
Yes.
So that would make it end in July of 2012?
Right. Or June. Well, no, July. That's right, because it starts in January.
I think it's our responsibility to see that we have improvement in the schools and the teachers are going to start being, start having the opportunity to have performance bonuses and we can start at the top.
I think that's a lovely idea. These bonus.
Is there any more discussion about the, the contract?
The term of the contract.
Term of the contract?
Just that one clause. We're only dealing with that one.
One, that's this one, number one. Any more discussion, I'm sorry. Any more discussion from the Board? Any more questions? Ms. Baker, I have a question. Has anyone called or checked to see what the other, like Davidson County or the surrounding counties started out with?
I believe Davidson County started with a two-year contract. Is that correct? I believe it was a two-year contract.
One thing that, that came to mind as I was thinking about the contract terms or, or contractual period was that if, like if you were hiring somebody from out of state, well, they, they're going to be taking a big risk by moving and curbing expense and that type thing where, in this case, we don't have that fortunately. And, but, but it's a bigger risk. And so if you're coming from North Dakota, well, you're going to, you're going to have to offer a longer contract to be able to make it worth someone's time to, to move to Murfreesboro. But I think, I think we have an opportunity here to, to put a carrot out there that's significant and that'll move our school system forward.
I'd like to make a point, Ms. Wade, for support of maybe a three and a half year contract for this reason. This spring, we'll be having a city election. There'll be three seats of our Board being re-elected. There will be four seats in two years. If we say a two and a half year contract, then that means we're going to be having an April election in April of 2012. The Board can't negotiate a contract 45 days before and 30 days after an election, I believe.
That's correct.
Ms. Baker? And so that would, if we do the two and a half, we're going to be put in that circumstance if, if we want to think that far ahead and think about that election. So maybe a three and a half would be better for this situation and then that would get us on a, a schedule after that point.
Good point.
I have a question.
Dr. Andrews?
If at any time we want to extend the contract to four years, we, we have that option. Is that correct? If she agreed, like say in four months or in two years or whatever, you can always do a new contract, I would assume.
Or we could amend the contract and add an extension. That, that's always an option for contractors, to amend a contract.
In thinking about prior contracts, part of the reason for the, the three-year limitation was that the Board didn't want to bind future Boards indefinitely. So that was part of the reason for that, that timeframe.
Now, let's see. A two and a half year contract ending... If we say a two-and-a-half-year contract, then that means we're going to be having an April election in April of 2012. The board can't negotiate a contract 45 days before and 30 days after an election, I believe, Ms. Baker. And so that would, if we do the two-and-a-half, we're going to be put in that circumstance if we want to think that far ahead and think about that election. So maybe a three-and-a-half would be better for this situation, and then that would get us on a schedule after that point.
Good point.
I have a question.
Dr. Andrews?
If at any time we want to extend the contract to four years, we have that option. Is that correct? If she agreed, like, say, in four months or in two years or whatever, you can always do a new contract, I would assume.
Or we could amend the contract and add an extension. That's always an option for contractors, to amend a contract.
In thinking about prior contracts, part of the reason for the three-year limitation was that the board didn't want to bind future boards indefinitely, so that was part of the reason for that timeframe.
Now, let's see. A two-and-a-half-year contract ending July of 2000, and what is that?
12.
12. And there's an election that is in April, and you can't renegotiate 30 days after the election, Ms. Baker? So that would just be May, right?
Right.
And so July, really...
July, you would be safe.
It would be perfectly safe, yeah.
We would be, but you have to consider the possibility of having four brand-new board members coming on in April of that year. That's a possibility. And then you have over half the board that would not know that director at all.
And when I said save, I mean, as far as that blackout period would not apply July 2012.
I think in the, I can just comment. I think in the past, we have seen that that was going to happen, and then we've actually approved a contract ahead of time. I think that's happened before in January.
We just did a contract extension before that time, I believe, and took care of that problem.
Right.
Any more discussion? I have on the table two and a half, three and a half.
You have on the table two and a half.
I have a motion for two and a half.
That's right.
We have a motion, and, excuse me, go ahead.
I think, I think Dr. Buttram has made a good point. I would, and I had not thought of that, but I think that's a good point. I would like to see us go with the three and a half to go to the July of 2013. Just my opinion.
I have some reservations about going that long before we start some kind of performance pay.
Well, I don't, I don't know that we need to, you know, discussion on performance pay is out there, but I don't know that we need to base today's decisions on what might happen in two years or three years or a year and a half. Performance pay may never come up.
The same thing about board, board seats. I don't think we can base today's decision on what might happen in two years or four years as far as board members coming and going. We have a job to do today. That's our responsibility today, and we have to base our decisions on the best information that we have available to us.
Any more discussion, or Ms. Duggan?
Call for a question.
Take the bet.
Ms. Ridley, call the roll on that two and a half.
Dr. Andrews?
Aye.
Dr. Buttram?
No.
Mr. Campbell?
No, ma'am.
Ms. Duggan?
No.
Ms., Mr. Hopper?
Yes.
Ms. Phillips?
Aye.
Ms. Wade?
Yes.
Motion to adjourn.
Two and a half years.
Question.
Yes, sir.
I hope it doesn't happen, but in the likelihood that it could, what happens if our newly-elected director refuses that?
That's a question, Ms. Baker.
Well...
I mean, there's always that option. I don't know that she will. I haven't, she hadn't said to me one way or the other, but I'm just asking.
Well, once we finish with your decisions tonight and it's presented, if there are strong objections to any of the items, you could come back to the board for further discussion.
Okay. Thank you.
Are you talking about further discussions tonight, or we'll have to come back in a special meeting?
It's, it's at the board's discretion.
Okay.
I'll leave that to y'all.
Okay. Ms. Hopper?
We've got a second part to that.
Okay, the second part on clause one is the time period in which you are going to give the director notification on or before a certain date if you wish to negotiate another employment contract. I believe typically that date's been 30 or 60 days' notice, and that's, that would be when it's coming to its close in July 2012. You would start discussions with the director on negotiating the next contract if you're looking to extend it. So I need to know from the board what timeframe you want to look at in that notification.
I would suggest that we look at a 30-day notice since we are going to be in 2012, and legally, we would need to stay away from that.
The blackout date that will run through May.
So 60 would give us too many days, but 30 would give us the right amount?
Right.
Okay. Will I make a motion that we give a 30-day notice on contract negotiation?
Is there a second?
Second.
Ms. Ridley, call the roll.
I had a question.
Oh, I'm sorry, questions?
Now, how does that apply if we decide to hope to extend her contract? How would that apply? Could we extend her contract prior to that?
Could you extend the contract prior to July of 2012?
Right.
Yes, at any time, you can make an amendment to the contract.
Okay.
But if you did make any amendments or changes to the contract, you have to avoid that blackout period relative to an election.
Okay. I understand. Just wanted to know if I could do, we could do it before, make sure it was...
Are there any other questions? Here none, Ms. Ridley, call the roll.
Dr. Buttram?
Yes.
Mr. Campbell?
Yes.
Ms. Duggan?
Yes.
Mr. Hopper?
Yes.
Ms. Phillips?
Aye.
Dr. Andrews?
Aye.
Ms. Wade?
Yes.
Motion to adjourn.
Okay, the next clause, is there any questions or changes or discussion on clause two, duties? Okay, I'm moving on to compensation. Is there any discussion or changes relative to the compensation clause? The item that I have left blank is the annual salary increase. That is a, that language comes from Ms. Mathis's former contract, and that, I left that in this document for your review and consideration, and that would be an issue I need y'all to clarify how, how you would want to handle that.
Mr. Campbell?
Would you, the second part of that, also, the director shall receive annual salary increase of not less than, in each fiscal year during which the board gives a percentage increase to licensed personnel?
Yes. In Ms. Mathis's contract, it read that she could receive an annual salary increase of not less than $2,500 in each fiscal year during which the board gives a percentage increase to licensed personnel. So if it was a year where licensed personnel were not given any sort of salary increase, then there was no $2,500 bonus or salary increase, it wasn't a bonus salary increase. But if licensed personnel were given a percentage increase in the rest of that clause is on the local portion of their salary, then there would be an automatic $2,500 salary increase.
The $2,500 was just an arbitrary number picked out of the air by one board member in, in the middle of a meeting. I would suggest instead of a dollar amount, if we do something like that, that it would be the same increase as the average increase for all of the, all of the teachers. As you, as you know, some teachers get a higher percentage increase and some get less, but you would calculate what the average is for all teachers, and then she would receive the, the same as the average for the teachers as her increase.
Okay, so explain to me, Mr. Anderson, if you will, how teacher A gets a larger percentage increase than teacher B?
Depending on their experience and where they fall on the pay scale. Will depend on their percentage of increase, and that's based on their step increase. It's not based on if the board determines to give a raise in addition to a step increase. The step increases are only based on the pre-negotiated salary schedule.
All right, so a teacher, a teacher at, after five years' experience gets a 3% increase above the step increase.
Okay.
A teacher with 10 years' experience gets the same percentage increase above the step increase.
That's right. If, if the board approves to give a percentage raise, then it, then everyone gets that percentage raise. The step increase is what makes the difference.
Okay, but it's still the same percentage increase, whether it's at the second-year level or the fifth-year level or the 10th-year level. If it's 3%, it's 3%.
Correct. That's the way we apply it to the schedule.
So just because I've been teaching 10 years and I'm making $5,000 more than Mr. Hopper after two years, my percentage increase is the same based on my current salary.
Right, the percentages, but not the dollar amount. That's correct. Because the percentage applied to a lower number is less money, and the same percentage applied to a higher.
3% of $10,000 is less than 3% of $1,000. I mean, more, okay, I got you. But it is the same percentage increase. That's what I'm getting at.
For clarification, for the attorneys writing this, I'm talking about the, the total increase that we use on the, the salary administration charts that you pass out each year.
Okay.
I have a...
Ms. Phillips, and then Dr. Andrews?
Now, in the past, we have not wanted to tie the director's pay or increases to the teachers' increases, and my understanding of the argument for that was because that way it would, it could seem as if she were advocating for them to have a raise so that she could have a raise. Now, is that, is that the way you remember the argument or, or not?
That was going to be my comment.
Okay. Okay.
So what's the answer?
That was a concern. I mean, there is, and we, we don't have to pay attention to that, but the concern was that your director is involved on behalf of the school board in negotiations, and there's been an effort not to have her salary tied to how negotiations went. I think that's, that's something that a lot of school boards consider. So in the past, we've had something like, you know, 2% raise or, you know, we've either done percentages or done a number that they're going to get that much more each year.
Ms. Duggan?
Ms. Baker, could we not leave this out of the contract and then each year when we have budget discussions, discuss the director's salary and what type of increase she might get? The reason I bring that up is with, we don't know what budgets are going to look like for next year or the year after, and I would hate to see us put something in a contract that might be very difficult for us to actually deliver on.
That is an option of the board, is at budget time, when you're doing your budget analysis, that you could factor in any sort of increase at that time?
Ms. Wade, I like that idea because I think that allows us the flexibility to look at what our economy's doing. It does remove our director from the negotiated item of salary and being vested interest in that. Also, I think that if we're looking at an increase, we want to consider the fact that our employee does not receive a state and local portion where teachers do, so maybe we can look at not the percent the teachers get, but the amount increased average that the teachers receive, and then base our decision for the director on that amount, which would leave us some flexibility. But I like the year-to-year flexibility with this specific component in the contract.
Is that a motion, Dr. Buttram? Would you like to make?
No, I didn't make a motion. I was just making a comment that I...
Okay, would you like to make a motion? Either one of you, since it's up, and Mrs. Duggan, I think it was you that brought that discussion, that you want to put that in the form of a motion?
I can.
Please, ma'am.
A move that we delete that sentence from the current contract and that we just put some wording in that would say the board would deal with an increase for our director in each year's discussions of the budget. That can be fine-tuned to fit the legalism of whatever legalese.
Is there a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion, or is there any, Ms. Phillips?
I'd like to get back to Mr. Hopper's comment. You know, with great respect, he's worked on a lot of, a lot of contracts, and I'm just wondering if he would share his thinking about his suggestion, too.
Well, you know, that, are you talking about performance?
No, the, the...
Oh, the percentage?
The percentage, right.
It, you know, it's, can be handled different ways. The board can choose to deal with it each year, or you can go on and, the only advantage of having it in the contract would be that you don't have to deal, deal with it every year or so. I don't see it matters a whole lot.
Okay, that's what I wanted to know. Did it matter a whole lot?
I was looking at the amount of the salary and what it would be at 1.5%. And it almost equaled out to what we had designated in Mrs. Mathis's, as you said, somebody grabbed it out of the air, but it was almost matching what her salary was. If we put, and this is just my, just me talking, at 1.5% in that block, that would come out to 2,003, a 2,000-something percentage if we did a 1.5%.
What's the base?
The base is 102961.
102961. 1.5 is, is...
What is it?
Is a foul, a little, little $1,500, $1,600.
I know, I didn't do 2%. I don't know.
I think it was, that's a 2% calculation.
2%. You could always put it in there, either you could leave it blank. If you put it in there and it's not there, you can't give it. Are we under obligation if we don't have any money? You can't give what you don't have.
Well, if you put it in the contract, you may have to find one.
Well, then we're going to have to...
Suggestion. Could we put in that sentence something to the effect that the director will receive an annual salary increase of not less than the annual percentage increase of teachers? In other words, what that would mean is if, if we were able to give teachers a 3% increase, then the director could not receive less than 3% increase. If we gave teachers 5%, the director could not receive less than the 5%. It keeps, it keeps everybody on the same keel and on the same level as far as percentage increases go, and I've always kind of felt like that if the people at the top of the ladder got the same thing and agreed to work with the same percentage increase as those other parts of the ladder, it sure does make a lot better for getting along.
Dr. Buttram?
And, and Mr. Campbell, I don't disagree with you, but I would point out that, remember, teachers are paid either their 3% on their local or their 3% on their state, so we don't always get a, a basic percentage. I mean, we could calculate one overall for the average teacher, but with the director's pay being straight from all of our, I mean, straight from our general funds, then, remember, she's not paid on a local and state formula like the teachers are. So when we talk about a percentage for a teacher, we have to remember it may be a percentage of a portion of their salary as opposed to the total salary. And I would also, if the board would like to, if we could increase the base salary $39 and make it a even 103, so it's always easy to remember, I wouldn't mind giving Dr. Gilbert an extra 39 a year to start off with.
She wants to pay tax on that, right?
I hope it puts her right in the next tax bracket.
We'll come back to that. Mrs. Phillips?
Yes, you know, I really didn't have strong feelings either way about this compensation, number three, but the more we talk about it, the more I think, gosh, we're going to have to, if we don't put something in there, we're going to have to rehash this year after year, and it can get long and, and, you know, I just, I'm just beginning to think now that it would certainly be easier not to have to re-argue this all the time.
Ms. Wade?
Dr. Andrews?
Dr. Andrews?
I liked the clause in the contract that said if the teachers did not get a raise, that the director not get a raise. I think that that's, that should be in whatever, however we decide the compensation. And that would obviously not happen unless we're in a really tight year. And I think probably Dr. Gilbert would agree with that.
Is, are there any of those suggestions that you would like to add to your motion? No?
No.
Okay.
You've got a motion, haven't you?
Yes, a motion on the table. Ms. Ridley, since we've talked so much about it, could you repeat that motion, please, ma'am?
Delete that sentence off.
Okay, boy, we need to go ahead and take a vote. If it's voted down, then we'll go back at it. You got something else you need? Okay.
I'm just happy.
Let me ask...
I don't understand which sentence you're talking about deleting, and then...
Also, the director shall receive an annual salary increase of not less than...
Okay.
I'm looking at the wrong page.
Okay.
But I also stated that it would be dollar per discussion for each budget year. I mean, that may be just given, but...
Now, I'll insert a sentence to that effect.
Okay.
Any more questions or comments before we vote on this? Each year, we're going, the board would have to talk about this percentage. Let me ask you, Mr. Anderson, have you seen in the past, when you're working with this, it's harder if you have to do it every year, or it works pretty good? Would it be better to put one in and work from that, or just leave it out?
In my experience as a board member, I've never gone back and revisited it every year. It's always been established, whether it be a percentage or a fixed amount.
Ms. Wade, if we were in different financial times, I would be in total agreement with what Mr. Anderson's just shared, that we all just go ahead and put something in our budget, I mean, in this contract. But this is a contract, and whatever we put here, we're obligated to. And I just feel like we need to give ourselves that flexibility, because we don't know. And if you listen to the governor speak, things are very grave in our state financially, and I don't see that things are turning around. So I just don't want to see us put ourselves in any type of bind at all if we can keep from it.
Okay. Ms. Phillips?
I agree with Ms. Duggan on that, not wanting to put ourselves in a bind. But I think that that follow-up to the sentence mitigates any chance of that by talking about whether or not our, our teachers get an increase. Because obviously, if they don't get an increase, our director wouldn't get an increase either. So that would keep, I mean, if we couldn't afford to give our teachers an increase, we certainly wouldn't want to give one to our director. But if we could afford to give one to our teachers, then it seems like the amount would be negligible for our director, you know, compared to the whole budget.
We could put something down of no less than, of not, it says not less than. We could say $1,000. We could put that number in there, but it's still, if the teachers didn't get a raise, she wouldn't. And we could still revisit it each year.
Call for a vote on the motion, please.
Ms. Ridley?
Mr. Campbell?
Yes, ma'am.
Ms. Duggan?
Yes.
Mr. Hopper?
Yes.
Ms. Phillips?
Aye.
Ms. Dr. Andrews?
Aye.
Dr. Buttram?
Yes.
Ms. Wade?
Yes. Ms. Baker?
Aye.
Are we, are we leaving that topic?
We're through with number three, aren't we?
We're through with number three unless there's any other changes you want to make to this clause.
Ms. Phillips, she had a change, or, Ms. Hopper?
I, I, Dr. Buttram's idea, I thought was very good.
Changing to the 103, even 103?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
I'm sorry.
I'll make a motion that we increase the base salary of Dr. Gilbert $39 to equal 103,000.
Second.
I'm sorry. There's been a motion and a second, to increase the salary to 103, even. 103,000. Ms. Ridley? That, don't need to call the roll for that. All in favor? Sign of aye.
Aye.
Thank you. We're ready to go, Mrs.?
No, we're not.
No, I'm sorry.
Did you have something else?
I have something I want to add under compensation. I want to make a motion that we, after a two-year period of time, offers a performance-based, one-time bonus of $15,000 if we're meeting the state test standards at that time.
There's been a motion and a second. I don't fully understand the compensation, but I know after I ask questions, somebody will explain it. Are there any questions or comments? Ms. Duggan?
I'm not opposed to what Mr. Hopper is suggesting. However, there are so many unknowns right now with testing within the state. The guidelines have not been decided, you know, what the, how much gain will have to be shown. All that hasn't been decided yet by the State Department. I don't think two years is long enough for a person to be able to show probably the gain that would need to be shown. We definitely will need to be making gain, for sure, and I have no doubt that there will be gain. But I just don't feel like that that's appropriate at this time.
Well, if we aren't making it, you don't pay it. If we are making it, you pay it.
Dr. Buttram?
Well, and I agree, too, that with Mr. Hopper about wanting to compensate our director for a job well done. But if we're looking at matching that to performance scores, we need to remember that those scores are representative of only half of our student population in Murfreesboro City. None of those scores reflect directly the kindergarten through second-grade student. We need to remember that. So, and there are things going on in our school system that are not measured by that test. So we would need to look at several criteria, I believe, to set a performance contract on, as opposed to scores. I don't mind maybe having scores as a weighted component in the formula, but I don't think it should be based on scores.
I'll have to defer to the educators as far as what a fair evaluation is. But the one I see written up in the newspaper all the time is that, is that whether we do or don't make the test scores. So, I don't know how to design the, the bogey for what we're trying to do. But I'm in favor of paying a significant amount for performance. I think that's one way we will move forward and see performance in our system. That's what everybody's been talking about over the last two, three months. We want to charge ahead, so let's go.
Ms. Campbell?
I don't like to see us base anybody's salary on test scores. If, if we're going to do it for, and nothing against the director, I don't care whether it's Linda Gilbert or Harry Gill. It's not the director that's making those test scores increase. It's the teacher in the classroom that's making those test scores increase. Now, if we're going to start giving performance bonuses, by jingle, let's go down to the teacher and say, "All right, Ms. Phillips, your group comes up one grade level more than they're supposed to, then let's give her a $5,000 bonus." We're not doing that. So, I don't, I don't, I don't like to see us have to compensate somebody because of an increase in test scores for a job that we are expecting them to do when we hire them as a classroom teacher. I just, I just don't, I don't think test scores should be a measurement for pay increases.
From what I've seen, that the state is moving toward teacher performance pay. So, if they're going to do that, then we need to have that throughout the organization.
In 1975, the state moved toward a pre-vocational career education program in the middle school level, and spent a quarter of a million dollars of central middle. After three years, the state said, "Sorry, we don't going to do it anymore." So I, you know, I keep saying that that's going to happen until it happens. And right now, in a budget crunch, I think performance contract monies is not going to be near as much as what some of them are talking about. That's just my opinion.
Ms. Phillips?
You know, I didn't have a lot of information about this sort of topic until the last TSBA convention. And I went to this, I was going to save this for later on in the conversation, but it's, I think it applies now. I went to professional development. It had to do with the incredible changes that happened in Hamilton County with Dr. Register, his team, the help from the state. Dr. Tucker, our own Dr. Tucker, was part of the initiative of the state. He were an exemplary educator, is that correct? Sent to Hamilton County to help them out. And I was so impressed by what they did. And financial incentives were very much a part of the changes that they were able to do in Hamilton County. And they really, really made significant change for their children, their families. They did give financial incentives to the teachers, but, you know, I can see, I, I don't hear Doc, Mr. Hopper saying that he's, you know, paying for, for part of the salary. This is just a bonus. If it weren't for the word bonus, I would agree with you. But it's the word bonus that intrigues me. I think, you know, I think that kind of, that kind of success should be rewarded. And you're talking about, the teachers make the difference. Yes, they absolutely do. But also, it's the leadership in the schools. And I think we talked about the leadership very much over the last few weeks, and how important leadership in our schools and particular types of leaderships. And I, I just really don't have a problem with the bonus if, if, if certain, you know, marks are made. Also, it is our director who takes the hit in the media. It is our director and our school board, but particularly the director who takes the hit in the media if scores and, and levels and benchmarks are not made. And so I do believe that there's a different type of onus burden on the shoulders of the director of schools that needs to be considered. So I do think that the bonus could be a very positive move for her, or whoever sits in that seat. So, I would be very supportive of a bonus. Because of the word bonus, it is not part of the actual salary. Her salaries would not be affected one way or the other if she didn't. But if she did, it would be a bonus. So I think that could be a very positive thing.
I don't know if Dr. Tucker would feel comfortable giving us her impression. You've worked in a system where they had, where they paid teachers extra. I know, I'm kind of putting you on the spot. You've, you've thought about, you are a director of schools right now. You've been involved in the efforts to, to improve school systems, and just, I would, you know, I wonder if you had any thoughts.
Well, regarding Chattanooga, those teachers who went to hard-to-staff schools were given the bonuses for going into those hard-to-staff schools. And generally, most of those schools that were hard to staff also were those who were high-needs schools, and several on the high-priority list. When you look at things that are projected, and as we look at the race to the top, which I'm going to be discussing a little bit later, one strong component within that has to do with the proposal for performance evaluation. It's a strong piece in there, and it's called Teachers as Leaders. So that's something that is in the forefront on our, on our newer radar scheme, of screen. And when you look at what's happening there, it's not in the pipeline. It's just about coming out of the pipeline right now, because that's one of the national incentives that's tied to the race to the top, which I'll go into detail a little bit later. And that's also a part of the MOU that comes from the state. It has to do, and specifically, the area of Great Teachers and Leaders. It talks about evaluations to inform compensation, promotion, and retention, looking at how these will impact the performance. So, all of that's tied together.
To fol, just to follow up on, on what you said, I, I think that, that there's not, there's not really a disadvantage of having it in this contract, because if, if we don't, you know, if we're not making satisfactory benchmarks, it doesn't cut her salary. She just doesn't get that bonus. If we do meet the benchmarks, then she would. So I, I don't, I doubt that it would be a bad thing, you know? I don't see how it would be a bad thing for the director. And it is, it is very important for our system that we meet benchmarks, whatever they are. And I don't think it's a bad incentive to give. So I, I think that, you know, we're, we have our feet to the fire, you know, unless the federal government changes the, the law, which they may very well, and they may modify things.
Right now, Tennessee has a, has a request for a waiver to move those benchmark dates of 2014 to 2016, 2018. Those are the proposals that are there, which would allow for an additional period of time for, for students to be able to achieve higher, and thereby the schools would come off the list. And the measure in terms of percentages would not be as great as soon. So they're asking for waivers on that.
Dr. Buttram?
I just wanted to make a comment about what Mr. Campbell said. And I, I do believe that it's the teachers who make the difference. Yes, it's the principals and the assistants and the directors who plan and, and help those teachers prepare to teach those students. But when we get down to it, it is the teachers that are working with those students to make those increases. Now, in a day where they're taking extended contract away, and if y'all will remember, extended contract in the state was put here for incentive pay for teachers. It's been here for 25 years now, and we saw teachers receiving it, but they're cutting that from the budget. So, for Tennessee to, to be talking about teacher incentive pay is one thing, but to really be serious about being able to do anything in the next three to four years, I think we all need to look at that realistic view. And we also need to remember that, to date, I don't believe the federal government has fully funded No Child Left Behind. I don't think that's going to happen by 2014. I don't think there are many educators that are, believe that's going to happen, nor do we think that we're going to reach that 100% proficiency, regardless of how low or how high we set our proficiency. And that's why we're looking to, as we get closer and closer to 2014, let's bump it to 2016, 2018, and we'll continue like this. But for us to think that we're going to, in, in this day and age, start paying teachers, and let me say, specific teachers, it wouldn't be all teachers, because remember, you have teachers that aren't measured on anything that this test offers. And then you have teachers who would get the money, and teachers who wouldn't get the money based on tests by saying, "Those kids weren't in my class all the time. I wasn't their only teacher." There are factors like their parents that aren't being included here. So why am I not getting a bonus when I have children whose parents may not be working with them as much as this next teacher, whose parents are working with them? So, many questions there that are going to come up, and they've been debated for years and years. And I, I really don't believe that we're going to see incentive pay for teachers come down the pike anytime soon, especially in, in our economic times.
Ms. Duggan?
Just a point of clarification for those in the audience that are listening. The reason that Tennessee's asked for an extension is due to the changes in our testing, and going from some of the lowest standards in the nation to about the third highest standards in the nation. So asking for a extension was a, I think, the right thing for the State Department and the State Board to do. Speaking about Chattanooga, one thing that should be kept in mind with their program, if I remember correctly, because I had the good fortune of working with Dr. Register and the teachers on that, is they had to develop portfolios for those teachers who would be going into grades that didn't have test scores, to help with that. But most of the funding for their increases were private monies. So that's one thing to keep in mind. I'm not against performance pay at all. However, here again, going back to the budget crunch that we're in, you know, I would think it'd be great to know that we're going to be where we need to be in two years, and Dr. Gilbert could get that type of performance increase, bonus. However, I'm just here, again, a little concerned about offering, put that amount of money out there, when we don't know what the economy's going to be. out there when we don't know what the economy's gonna be like in two years.
Comment?
Uh, Mr. Campbell?
Well, I'm not against paying people for the job they do, but I would be against putting it in this contract. If we put in here $15,000, and then let's say that whatever the goal is, is not made, then there are gonna be those people that are gonna say, "Well, she's not worth what she's getting now because she couldn't, didn't get the $15,000 incentive pay." Let's leave that part out, and if we wanna come up in a year or two years and talk about it, we can still do it without putting it into a contract. But I'm not in favor of performance pay on test scores.
There?
I got a motion.
Yes.
Can you wait a second?
Yeah.
There was a second, there's motion and a second.
Ms. Ridley? Would you please read that motion and take the vote?
Mr. Hopper moved that after a two-year period of time, that the board offers the director a performance pay of $1,000 to $15,000 if the system is needing state standards.
Thank you, ma'am. Call the roll, Ms. Ridley.
Dr. Buckland?
No.
Mr. Campbell?
No, ma'am.
Ms. Duggan?
No.
Mr. Hopper?
Yes.
Ms. Phillips?
Aye.
Is it Dr. Andrews?
Aye.
Mrs. White?
No.
Okay, does the board have any more discussion about clause three, compensation? The next clause is four, regarding deferred compensation. This is very standard. It's exactly what we offer other full-time employees. Are there any, is there any discussion? Clause three regards the benefits for the director. Again, this is the exact same, the director's requested the same benefits that full-time employees receive, and that's what's written here. In addition, there was a request for a laptop computer, which I believe we already provide, and a cellphone, which we already provided the director. So that, are there, is there any discussion on clause five benefits?
How much vacation?
Based on years of working in work policy, zero to five is one day per month. Five to 10, I think it's one and a third. And anyone over 10 years of experience gets 1.66, one and two-thirds days per month of service. So based on the years of experience, that's, that would be one and two-thirds in this case.
Thank you, Mr. Wilkinson.
Okay, the next clause is clause six, membership dues. Dr. Gilbert has only requested that the board pay the membership fees and dues for the Tennessee Organization for School Superintendents, which we traditionally have always paid for the director. Any discussion on that clause?
Can we put a clause in there saying that if there's another organization that she wishes to join, that she brings that to the board for approval on a yearly basis?
Yes.
Okay.
Would you like to put that in?
Does it have to be in there?
It doesn't have to be in there.
But she could do that anyway?
That's, that's correct. She could.
Then I don't need to make a motion.
Okay. Any other discussion on that clause? Okay, clause seven is business expenses. This is the same clause that was in the previous director's contract, and it's just that we're gonna compensate her for any expenses that she incurs in performing her official duties, such as attending conferences, et cetera, on behalf of the school system. Any discussion on clause seven?
Are these expenses, the reimbursement, is that something that the board approves before the reimbursement? Are we supposed to see whatever receipts and all and that sort of thing, or have an idea of what's being spent, Ms. Anderson?
I know we haven't been doing that in the past. It's just, it's part of the budget process, the amount of money we anticipate is built into the budget of what they would spend. And when you approve the budget, you are in effect approving up to that amount.
I would like to have in that clause somewhere that we be kept aware of those expenses on a monthly basis before the reimbursements are there. I'll make that in form of a motion.
You can go ahead and make, let me go ahead and make the motion, get the second, then we'll come up with questions.
Would that not be something we would request from the staff as opposed to having to be a part of the contract? I mean, we could just ask
Yeah.
that they give us a report every month if there any, had been any
That's fine.
action on the reimbursement account.
Then I withdraw the motion if we can get those on a monthly basis.
We had not done this before, right?
No.
It's a...
Dr. Andrews?
Just, just like to comment. I mean, that's a little, that's getting a little bit of micromanagement to be looking at, you know, small items like that, I would think.
But it's just our employee. I mean, it's one employee that we
Right.
I think, that's not micromanaging, that's managing.
I think it's managing, managing finance. And I'm not saying that it's abused. I'm not saying that at all. But I think it's part of our budget process. I think that's things that we need to know.
I would hate for our director to be, ever have to be put in a situation where they had to sit down and explain, you know, or justify what would be reasonable to us and, you know, have to question her about it. I mean, what might, you know, she'll be in this, we have to have some trust there that she's in the situation where she would have to make the call whether this was an expense or not. And, and she's given, is she given in the, a certain amount of money that is discretionary?
Carrie, is there not a certain amount that's budgeted every year?
Yes, there's a, there's a budgeted amount for travel
Right.
in there, and there's budget amount for discretionary money in the director's line.
That's what I thought, and I, I just wanted to, you know, I don't want her to have to explain lunch, or, or, you know, something reasonable like that. I just think these small expenses are... I don't know. I tend to, I tend to think as Dr. Andrews does about that. I don't wanna get into micromanaging.
Mr. Anderson, when these receipts, are you the one that they're bought to?
Yes, ma'am. I approve all the director's expense receipts.
And if you had any question, you would ask the director?
Oh, yes. There's been very, very few ever turned in. There've been very few expenses made on expense report. The only ones that have been made have been one travel out of town for a conference. Is it?
Okay. Any more comments or questions for Ms. Anderson? Ms. Phillips?
It's not for Mr. Anderson, but I just feel that our staff can successfully manage their jobs and, and take care of that since I, we, we know that Mr. Anderson would ask whatever pertinent questions he deemed necessary.
Being that this is the only employee we have, do you have any problem if a board member asks, from time to time, just ask you?
Ma'am, it's the will of the board, and I was, you know, the director would always ask, ask me to give the information to her to give to the board.
Okay.
It's not an issue for me.
Mr. Campbell, would you have a problem if you desired to have?
Ms. White, I don't have a motion at all.
No, mine is just a question.
Okay, your question?
Would you have any problem asking Mr. Anderson for that report if you needed it, or any other board members, if you wanted to see it? Would you have any, any problem asking him for it?
No, ma'am.
Okay.
I thought, Mr. Anderson, I had already agreed on that, and some of you are beating this horse to death already.
We wanna make sure that everything is clarified
I'm, I'm very clear, Mr. Anderson.
Yes, ma'am.
Hold up. Let me call this meeting back to order and business. I wanna make sure that all questions get answered and all people get their chance to ask questions. That's the only thing I ask of this board. Carry on, Ms. Baker.
Okay, the next clause deals with professional liability, and this is the same clause that was in Ms. Mathis's contract. It indicates that the board will, agrees to defend, hold harmless, and indemnify the director for any and all demands, claims, suits, actions, or legal proceedings brought against the director in her official capacity as an employee of the board, provided the incident arose while the director was acting within the scope of her employment. And it does exclude any criminal litigation and litigation regarding the employment contract. The board needs to keep in mind that the school system is part of the city's self-insurance fund, and that is what we look to, to cover us when there are any lawsuits and liabilities. Right now, this clause covers any, indemnifies and defends the director for any amount, regardless of whether the city's self-insurance fund is going to cover the full amount. Sometimes they may not cover the full amount.
Mrs. White?
Ms. Duggan?
I have some real concerns with this part of the contract in that the city fund, if that's the correct terminology, does not cover any liability concerning special ed issues.
It doesn't cover special ed placement.
And because this is a school system and we have special ed students and there are, you know, concerns in that area, that I feel like the board needs to look for additional coverage in that area, either something that we could do now and, and have immediately after some research is done on that, or at least for it to be built into our new budget in the new budget year, just to make sure that this board is protected, that our district's protected in every way possible.
Thank you, Ms. Duggan. Dr. Andrews, you have a comment?
Yeah, I'd, I'd like to maybe direct the staff to get to work on that and make sure that we're well backed, backed up so that this clause can stand as it is and that we will not be at risk. If you feel like there's any more insurance policies we need to get or whatever to, to make sure that we're not at risk, then I think we should go ahead with that.
The board does understand that if we had a real large claim, some kind of school board accident, or bus accident or something, and there conceivably could be a claim that would exceed the city's self-insurance fund limits, and then that it would come against the school board money. So it, and any kind of coverage that you would buy for this type thing probably will be very expensive to cover the excess.
And I understand that. I just think we need to make sure that we check into it, and I don't know that we need a motion for it to be checked into, but I would like to see Mr. Anderson, if he would be the proper person to go ahead and investigate that and bring us back.
Is it possible to defer this particular clause and to, the staff can research what our options are as far as the excess coverage and the special needs coverage and those kind of things that you, you're gonna have to actually get to some, some underwriter at a head office of an insurance company to get those kind of answers, I think.
Okay, the way this clause has been working in the past is if we had a lawsuit that exceeded that amount covered by the city's risk management fund, then the school board would be liable for it directly. And not, not you as individuals, but the, our budget, our, the system's budget. Fortunately, we have not been put in that position up to this time, and that's not to say it can't happen in the future. Options you have on this clause are to go as is, continue that risk, and in the meantime, look for this extra coverage. Another option would be to limit the indemnification to the limits of the city's self-insurance fund. And if and when you obtain that additional cover, coverage to give you the added protection, you could come back and amend this clause to expand it back to full indemnification. Those are your options, and that's at your discretion, how you'd like to handle that decision.
We really just want an umbrella to the, over the city coverage, right? And to cover the special needs.
Right.
Right.
Ms. Phillips?
Two things. Does the city have a risk management specialist, Ms. Baker?
We have the, a risk manager for the city, Mr. Richard Rutter. He may have information about these, these type of policies. I'm not sure. I have not had an opportunity to speak with him about this issue.
Perhaps Mr. Anderson can meet with him if he's going to, to do that. And secondly, can you explain to me again what limit the, let's see, where was the wording here? The limit the indemnification? Does that mean that there's no way to limit how much someone can sue you for?
Right, there's no way to limit. In a lawsuit, they can list whatever amount they want to. There is a state law called the Governmental Tort Liability Act that for governmental entities and for certain actions, certain conduct of a governmental employee acting in the course and scope of their job, the state has deemed it necessary to limit the amount of liability exposure for those governmental employees. And that could, that is at a limit currently and always has the risk of increasing by the legislature annually at 350,000 per incident. And that, that's the height, that's the high end right now of that limit. Now, that's per incident. And that covers things done in the scope of their job. That means they were following policy and they were doing what they should do. The things that are not covered under the Governmental Tort Liability Act are intentional torts, such as an assault, would not be covered under the Governmental Tort Liability Act. There would be no limit on that. Those type of more intentional, obviously blatantly not following policy, run the risk of not being covered by the Governmental Tort Liability Act. That is always determined on a case-by-case basis. There's lots of case law out there dealing with the Governmental Tort Liability Act, so I can't give you a firm, you know, this, this is what's covered. This is not what's covered because it will be very case-sensitive to the particular incident. But that's just a general idea of how that law works. So you understand that.
Thank you.
Are there any other questions? Dr. Andrews, you have a question?
Just one comment. I think if I were the director coming in, I would certainly want number eight right like it's written. And I, I feel that we owe it to Dr. Gilbert to, to, to give her the backup and indemnify her for her actions and as director of schools.
You do understand you could be called on to shell out a huge amount of school system money in an event of lawsuit?
I do, I do, and that's why I want us to get an umbrella. But I'd, I'd like us to have this clause in there for her.
Well, if we leave it like it is, we need to immediately take bids and to try to get some kind of a professional liability umbrella coverage, which is gonna be very, very expensive.
When you say very
Often those are not.
Yes, it is, I've checked.
Oh, you did?
Ms. Phillips, you have a question?
What's your idea of very, very expensive?
Laws.
Laws.
Because if there's a ceiling of $350,000 per incident, is that?
Well, per incident could be every day the child was, something was not done correctly in a classroom. One lawsuit could incorporate numerous incidents. So that's, that's one way that that occurs. Now, you need to, of course, this is based on, people will sue for, you know, whatever amount they want, but the old adage is what the judge or the jury rules and awards at the end is what you're actually gonna have to pay. But you never know what you're gonna be dealt in that situation.
Ms. Duggan?
Is it feasible to think that prior to Dr. Gilbert's first day as the director, that we could have that we could have something in place? I know that doesn't give much time.
You would have to bid out the purchase if it's over a certain amount? What is it, five thousand?
If it's over ten thousand, it needs to be bid out.
So, it probably can't happen that quickly.
Right.
I just think we need to move forward on this and get some bids and let us, you know, have an idea of how much it's gonna be. I do realize it's gonna be expensive, but I think it's one of those expenses we can't afford not to incur.
Ms. Phillips.
So, the option is to, for full protection, is to get an umbrella policy or to delete this section?
No, no, there's no, not to delete it in its entirety at all, it would be just-
Amend it?
To, you have an option to amend it back to, you're gonna indemnify the director to the limits of the city's self-insurance fund, but keep in mind with that umbrella policy, you're still having risk of being sued beyond what the self-insurance fund is going to cover the school board for, not just based on the director's actions, but any employee's actions.
Also, I believe this same policy would extend to all employees of the system, so you're not just buying an umbrella for the coverage for one individual, but you're covering every employee in the entire school system, and that's why you're not talking about three hundred dollars a year.
Yes.
Because I think we do have to keep in mind that, if I understand correctly the way this is currently written, if there's a suit that involves a placement in special ed, there's no coverage at all.
There's no coverage by the city's self-insurance fund at all. It comes straight out of the city school coffers. And that's always been the case, ever since the city, the city schools became a part of the self-insurance fund.
Well, I don't know how, I don't know how you go about it, but it looks like to me it needs further research before we do anything, and I don't know how you're gonna accomplish getting the contract in tonight if you take out that one clause and research this and away.
Well, it's a clause you could amend at a later date with discussion with the director. You would have to reach agreement on that amendment, of course, but there is that potential.
Board, could we not go ahead and leave it and give Mr. Anderson the authority? Let's go, we'll do that, Mrs. Baker.
That was option one, right?
Yes.
Okay.
Ms. Rowell.
Okay. Evaluation, this is similar to the clause in the prior director's contract relative to your evaluation issues. One of the factors that I've listed here that, from the other contract and looking at the consultant's recommendations for evaluation are including but not limited to an examination of the establishment and maintenance of educational goals, attainment of student performance and achievement improvement goals agreed upon by the board and the director, administration of personnel, rapport with the school board, staff and community, and other factors of appraisal that may be prepared by the board or extends a need and given to the director. So, are there any changes to this? Any discussion?
I don't like the, the performance, student performance, again, being tied directly to the director's contract. If possible, maybe we could look at a year and a half from now, having TSBA come in and do their comprehensive evaluation with us again, and that would give Dr. Gilbert the rest of this year and then one full year, and after our first evaluation, that would give us an excellent benchmark to move forward from, and that would be within a two-year period. We could do that in a year and a half, and again, let TSBA come in and assist us in that process. They have a very good process that they use, and it's very comprehensive. I think it would encompass all of these things that we've listed here, but still keep it fair with the student performance.
Ms. Phillips.
I do believe we have a policy that directs the board to evaluate the director annually, is that correct? You have a policy?
I believe, I think it's always been in the contract that we would do an evaluation at least annually. The board shall review the director's performance at least annually. That's the way it's always read in the contract.
That's not a policy, because we did not do that with Ms. Mathis.
That's, that's been in the contract, so, about reviewing the director's performance at least annually, so.
Is that what TSBA recommends annually?
I think, there was a reason, I'm trying to remember what the reason was, but there was a reason that we did that annually.
I think probably Dr. Butcher's suggestion is a good one personally because of the time that Dr. Gilbert's just getting here, middle of this year, now you says hiring and paying TSBA to do an evaluation this year. I think that if we could maybe do that, like you say, eighteen months out or whatever.
Yeah, I can support, I can support that, but I do think that you're gonna-
And then you get, I'm sorry, and then you go on an annual thing after that.
I can, I can support that, but I do think that you're gonna have to look at performance as part of anyone's evaluation.
I think that TSBA does address performance in their components of their contract, of their-
I believe they do. If we can conclude the discussion of this clause, I'd like for us to break from our discussion of the contract and allow the students that have come for a presentation to do that so they can go and get home. So, if y'all could go, how would you like to handle this section? Would you like for it to be, the first evaluation will occur within eighteen months, a year and a half? I need a motion.
I make a motion that we do our first evaluation of the director in the spring of two thousand and eleven, and look at TSBA to assist us in that evaluation, and I'll get suggestions on reviewing yearly or annually after that point.
There's the motion, is there a sec?
Second.
Oh, thank you. There's a motion and a second. Questions?
Just have a comment that I do think that, that student performance is a very critical part of the director's job. I mean, it's a critical reflection of the director's job, and that if we do that in the spring, we won't have, we won't have scores back from that year, we'll just have scores back from two thousand and ten, you know? And I think that we could have, we could have a brief evaluation this summer, this coming summer, that didn't go into a lot of detail, but I think it's, it's always good for the board to be able to give feedback about how well the director, how well we think the director is performing. So, we could consider all those things and maybe concentrate on the more basic things this summer, and then maybe do it each summer.
That sounds fine. That sounds-
Are there any other questions?
I have a question.
Ms. Phillips.
Dr. Andrews, you were saying summer as opposed to spring because by then the test scores would be back, am I understanding you correctly?
Yeah, late summer, right.
Okay.
There's a, there's a possibility they won't be back, and typically, we get our AYP scores back around June, but our value-added and achievement scores aren't released, embargoed until sometime in July, August, even later than that, and then released to the public in October, November typically, but again, with the changes, we never know.
Is the current motion to have the test, I mean, the test, the first evaluation in spring two thousand and eleven, and annually thereafter, and everything else is the same, is that, is that the motion?
That's the motion.
I wonder if Dr. Butcher would be willing to move it three months to summer? His motion.
Move it back?
Just move it forward two or three months till, give time for test scores to come in.
If, if we're going to, again, if we're gonna base on the test scores, but we may wanna look at TSBA's model to see, and the only reason I say that is if we do move it forward, say we move it to August, then you're going to be beginning a school year when you're trying to talk to our director about her contract. I think when you wanna talk to someone about the contract, even though the scores aren't gonna be in, we really need to look at June because you've ended a year, you kinda know everything that's happened, you have a good feeling about the scores, but we will not know those scores. But again, I don't necessarily wanna base everything we're doing on those test scores.
Dr. Andrews.
I don't think the evaluation relates to the contract, it's just, you know, it's just, we do the evaluation, it's not tied in with time of contract.
Yes, yes, it has been in the contract that we would do an evaluation.
It's been in the contract that we do it, but it's not as part of contract negotiations that we do it at that time.
Oh, right.
Dr. Butcher has a motion on the floor, and there has been a second, that we do it in the spring. You could always amend after you vote for this, and somehow or another you need to make some changes come spring, you could always move it a month ahead, a month back.
And my motion was for the first evaluation to occur in the spring of two thousand and twelve. That doesn't say they have to occur every year in the spring. I'm just saying the first one would occur approximately eighteen months from now, two thousand and eleven, yeah.
Yeah, I had two thousand and eleven.
Sorry.
And Dr. Butcher, I wanna clarify, you had said, "and look at TSBA to assist." Did you mean for that to be part of the contract, or just you'll consider that when it comes time to decide how to do that?
Right, if it doesn't need to be part of the contract, that's fine. I was just thinking that that's the source we would use.
Okay, so the change I'm looking at with your motion is that first sentence is that the first evaluation of the director shall be held in the spring of two thousand and eleven, and thereafter, the director shall be evaluated on an annual basis.
All have heard the motion. Ms. Ridley, please call the row.
Mr. Campbell?
Yes, ma'am.
Ms. Duggan?
Yes.
Mr. Hafer?
Yes.
Ms. Phillips?
Aye.
Dr. Andrews?
Aye.
Dr. Butcher?
Yes.
Ms. Wade?
Yes.
Chairwoman Wade?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you for allowing this to happen. We have some wonderful children here who have been with us throughout the night, and they have been so patient and so diligent, and we wanna make sure that they get an opportunity to present tonight. So, I've talked with Dr. Gilbert, and she and I are in agreement that we need to stop at this time and allow our children to be showcased as they are truly here to share with us some information. We have with us, from the Discovery School, our students, and we have Dr. Linda Clark, who's a principal, and we have Ms. Cindy Jones, and they're gonna tell us about Chi America.
Hello, good evening.
Good evening.
Thank you very much for giving us the chance to come and talk to you about a very exciting program. This is Mrs. Jones, and she has been involved in Chi America for about the past five or six months. And actually, we're gonna be talking to you about two different things. One is a program that Cindy's been involved with, where they have been in video conferencing with students in elementary schools in Beijing. And the next part is that we're going to talk to you about an extension of the program that we would like to see happen over the next couple of years. And as you hear what we have to say, envision it not only for the Discovery School, but for other schools possibly in the district, because we feel that it truly has a lot to offer students, has a lot of potential for opening some doors for them that they would not otherwise have that opportunity.
Excellent. Good evening. We have several parents and children here who participated in Chi America last year and this year, and because they've been so patient and waited so long, I'd like to introduce them and especially have the children come up if they feel so inclined, and share a little bit about what we've been doing and how they feel. So, if we could pan the camera, and you could raise your hand, we have Dr. Shang Shaker, can't say his name exactly right, and Dr. Gota, and their son, Chayton, raise your hand, there you go, and Ms. Withero and her son, Chase. There we go, we have Ms. Wheeler and her wonderful daughter, Ally, and we have Ms. List and her daughter, Emily. So, because they're hanging on by a thread, I would like them to come up if they'd like to share anything about Chi America, or parents too. Aw, come on, you've been waiting all evening.
I like Chi America because we're meeting different people from around the, we're meeting new students from around the world that we might never see for the rest of our lives. We are, they have different cultures, and we're learning about their cultures, and they're, they've even showed us the video of what they do at school, so.
Excellent.
Yeah.
Thank you so much.
Very good. Ally? Emily? No, no. Emily? No.
To me, Chi America is like a window for me. You get to see Chinese people and their culture, you get to learn about their schools and their language, and they also get to profit from this program, and I just really like it for that reason, so, yeah.
Thank you, babe. Chase?
The reason I like Chi America is because we get to interact with people across the globe, and it's probably once-in-a-lifetime chance, and you'll probably never get another chance in your whole entire life to do that.
Probably not, but maybe.
Tomorrow night, actually.
Tomorrow night, actually, Thursday night we will, but.
But I'm just really excited and-
You're doing great. He's doing great. Ally, don't even say a word, you're doing great.
I like Chi America because we get to learn more about their culture and their holidays, and last year, we actually got to learn more about their dragon boat festival.
Excellent. Very good. Excellent. Do you have any questions for the parents or the children? I know you don't know much about it at this moment, but.
I have a comment.
All right.
What wonderful, well-spoken, enthusiastic, white children. I mean, that's so good, you all did a great job. Each one of you did a great job telling us about it. What's the dragon? Was it Dragon Festival?
Dragon Boat Festival, yes.
Dragon that she mentioned, what was that?
Well, I don't remember exactly, but it's quite big over there, where there are actually boats, and they have flowers and food, and it's what a holiday that we don't have.
And they're, they're going to be chronicling their experience over Christmas. That's their Christmas homework, is they're gonna be documenting all of the rituals and the things we go through at Christmas, from cookie baking to Christmas presents and to the tree and Santa, and they'll be sending all of that to students in China.
Yes.
So, it's very exciting, a wonderful opportunity to really delve into another culture and have that firsthand experience that otherwise they wouldn't have.
Right, right.
Are the classes connected through webcams?
Through, we do it through video conferencing. It's set up, we come, and there'll be a classroom, the parents come, and our children come, and the teacher comes. And then the teachers have a chance to talk to each other, and the students have a chance to talk. I'll give you an example, on one of them, I was talking, and I said, "I can talk to you for just a minute," and then I have to get down to the basketball game, "so keep your fingers crossed because we want to win." So, they immediately said back, "What does that mean, keep your fingers crossed?"
What does that mean, keep fingers crossed?
Because that's a cultural thing that they didn't understand.
I had no idea.
So, it was a wonderful, wonderful chance to exchange that kind of information, and it just makes you feel like, okay, they're really not that far away, it's like, it's like getting to talk to people who are next door, so.
And Christmas is really gaining in popularity over there, and so they actually, at the Wulushu School, if I'm saying it correctly, requested that our children document Christmas with video drawings, anything, so that they can understand it and celebrate it more. So, yes, I assigned them homework over holidays, all the fifth grade at DSR are doing that, but they're very excited about it, and one little boy, Colin, is already on it, he's composed a song, he's got pictures going, and so they're- He's composed a song, he's got pictures going, and so they're very excited about this. So we'd like to barrel through our slides, and if our children and parents would like to go, thank you so much for coming. Let's give them a round of applause. Dr. Clark with our agenda?
Okay. We're going to be talking about the motivation, which we started talking to you a little bit about, why do we want to do this? What is this going to help us to achieve? What will it do for children? And what will it do for teachers and our school culture in general? And we're going to be talking about a couple of different programs that we are looking at that could help us to achieve this. And Cindy will talk to you more about that. Just an overview of what the next phase would look like, because the next phase is different from what we're doing right now.
Yes.
And then we'll summarize that for you.
All right. So, Dr. Clark, we'll talk in a moment about why in the world should we even consider a foreign language in elementary school?
Well, because in the world today, between 5,000 and 6,000 different languages are spoken. And we're no longer so contained that we're just to our own country. We're now a global community. And that's more and more true as we travel more and more, and students are on the internet internationally now sometimes.
Right, right.
So we're not to our close little self anymore. We're expanding out, and this is the way that will help us, one way that will help us do that. There's a lot of research that talks about these kinds of experience for elementary students and the benefits that that will do. And even Jean Piaget, in his research, showed, thank you, showed that children that are given these kinds of experiences in elementary school, and things that are challenging and new, come in, and they give them more, thank you. It helps them to become more tolerant and become more excited about learning when they have the firsthand experiences and new ideas are introduced. And we're certainly introducing a new idea.
And if you think of Noam Chomsky, and not everybody agrees with his hypothesis of the critical period, that there sometimes are windows of opportunity for children to learn. So we're working with Dr. Jun Da, a linguist at MTSU, to help us understand why it's important to begin when we need to in elementary school. So this naturally goes to why did we pick Chinese? And there's a tremendous growth in China, as we all know. There's the latest estimate I could pull up was that our trade with China will be over $400 billion in 2010. So economically, it makes sense that our children know more about China and have a little grasp of Chinese language. When you think about the Chinese also, because they're such a major power, we need to think about them in terms of global perspectives, environmental concerns, currency exchange, trade laws, all that affect Tennessee very, very, very importantly. China also, you have to understand, is a major presence culturally in the United States. Cuisine, music, literature, dance, philosophy, religion. So it's very important that if there's a major country, we need to understand them culturally also. Chinese is the most widely spoken first language in the world, and Chinese now tops the Internet in the most frequently used language. It's not English anymore. It's Chinese. And last but not least, the United States government has said there are several critical languages. One is Korean, one is Japanese, the Turkic languages, but most important and most critical is Chinese. So it's a critical language as deemed by the United States. So for those reasons, we think it's great to begin this program.
Okay, so the bottom line is, it's really a big world out there, and this is our way of helping our students to become familiar with that. Also, another factor to consider is we're always looking at ways to help teachers meet standards. And this is a real-life application. This is a real-life way to do that. So when we're talking about comparing landforms, geography, when we're talking about comparing cultures, and just different things about our life, if we have something to tie that into, and we have another culture to look at, it gives us that real-life comparison. And then there's no, another thing that's happened out of this has been the use of technology. It's helping us to bring our engagement with technology up to the next level, because we're looking at ways that we can continue this program on. And it's been, it's been a challenge, but it's working.
It's, we're learning, teachers and children. We use MSN Messenger and Skype, Twitter, ePals, we fax things the old-fashioned way. We just emailed a bunch of things to them this evening before we came. So all this new social media and all the old technology, our children and teachers are getting to use it firsthand. Now, another aspect of Chi America, and this thing has just grown like topsy, is I'm so hoping that our teachers can do something called action research, and I'll get into that more in a minute. This is where teachers gather data as they go along. It's nothing new, nothing added. And Ms. Wen Yan-Joe and I have published already on this, and we're willing to do workshops and teach the teachers who would like to know how to systematically collect the data, how to analyze it, and how to publish in the scholarly journal. And this is great for our younger teachers that are building their resumes.
Now, I just want to interject something there. Ms. Jones already has other teachers that have come on board with her, so it's not like she's doing it alone anymore. She has other teachers. And back to the action research, that's a wonderful tool that teachers have to reflect on their practice and make their practice more effective because of that reflection.
They do that with National Board Certification. They do action research. So this is just a different way of doing it. And the last thing is leadership, and I'll get into that a little bit more, but we've been approached by some organizations to think about this in terms of leadership. When our children work with people, no matter where they are in the world, that are leaders, they work with them, they see them, they evaluate them, they emulate them, and all our children in our system can become better leaders, but also better followers. And at DSR, one of our challenges is helping our little leaders become good followers also. It's true.
All right. So then we're going to take the next step into what would the next phase look like. So we're looking at being a host school for a teacher from China for one and possibly two years. So this is a big leap from where we've been, that we've had the video conference, and now we're looking at bringing a teacher here to be in residence in our school for at least a year. And so here's some, here's some ideas that we've had. We're building it as we go along.
Yes.
We're seeing what we think would work and getting lots of ideas from different people. Of course, there would be some in-class instruction. It would help in helping us meet standards, helping us look at new ways to approach different ideas. We would also incorporate them into our special areas. They're very skilled in drama. They're very skilled in music, because these are some of the top teachers in China that are in this particular program. So they're willing to come in and collaborate in different curriculum areas. Then there would be whole-school type things, sort of like what the kids were talking about before, explaining holidays, telling about what an average day looks like in their school. We might try to do a day in a Chinese school in our school, and see that as a possibility. Also, there would be some Mandarin language instruction as just part of the program, and certainly you would be reassured to know that it would be, as children and teachers would desire that, and it would be an age-appropriate way.
On demand. Exactly. We're also considering what we did at Bellwood when I had some Japanese students come when I was doing the Fulbright, to use our TVs and to have a 10-minute morning or noon language lesson on the very basics. You know, how do you say good morning? How do you say hello? How do you say shusha, thank you? And then the intensive language program that Dr. Clark was talking about, it would be, depending on the age level, depending on where the teacher is, if they would like to do it or not, how much time they have to spend, how interested the children are, it would be very, very flexible.
I have this vision of what the classroom might look like, because if we are able to do this, if we gain your support and we're able to do this, we'd like for the teacher to have her own room in our school and be able to put up some Chinese art and bring in Chinese artifacts, and lots of things to make it a real authentic experience as we work them into different ways and different parts of our curriculum.
And we've even had a couple of donations from the private sector for books and tapes and music. And we had another parent who worked at a bookstore get it for us at quite a discount. So we're also building a library and have a special Chinese area set up. We want to collaborate also with MTSU. We have the prestigious Confucius Center. We're so fortunate to have that. And Dr. Ping, he likes to be called, has already come over several times and pledged his support. That is their mission at the Confucius Center, to help us with projects like this. And interestingly, at the end, we have a Chinese population in Murfreesboro who do not speak English well. They're very marginalized, and yet they're an important part of our culture, important part of our community. So we're even considering, if we can stretch this lady or guy further, to set up English language lessons to help these people become more involved. They don't know how to speak the language, they feel isolated. So that's just another dream that we have.
But what a great community link to reach out to people in the community and to pull them in and make them more a part of Murfreesboro.
So let me explain to you a little bit more about what the program is. It's called Hanban, and that's a nickname for the Chinese Language Council International. And this is made up in China of 12 state ministries and commissions, and they call it Hanban for short. But it's not just a Chinese organization. I don't know if they can see the slides, but it's Teachers of Critical Languages Program, the American Councils of International Education, and this is all through the Department of State, and there's a link for you if you'd like to go to it. So this is nothing new and startling. It's done, Hanban is all over the world, it's all over the United States, it's just different and unique to this area. But we're ready for it. We can do this. I need to emphasize, too, that these teachers, and there's a lot of teachers in China, extremely carefully screened, so we not only have the best of the best of the best, we have tremendously master teachers. I don't know how else to say it, but these are the cream of the crop that would come. So the quality is guaranteed by our government and by the Chinese government.
We just look forward to working shoulder to shoulder with those folks, because not only will they learn from us, but we will learn from them as well.
So we want to talk about what are we expected to do as a system and as a school?
Okay. One of the first things is like setting up the classroom, like I said, to have that feeling of making them feel at home in our school. So they would have their classroom. How can we do that, including them in all kinds of school activities, making them part of the faculty, and then further making them part of the community? And if we could ever get the English language component going as well, to, I mean, that would be a real partnership in the community. To help them to understand the special aspects that makes their host community unique and special, because Discovery School is a little bit different, and they would want to know that and feel comfortable with that and learn from that possibility.
I'm going to be the academic mentor, and Susan Lyons has agreed to be our cultural mentor, because both are required by the program.
But they would further need to understand about our schedules and scheduling, classroom management, make connections with the faculty and the colleagues. And then outside of the school, we've got to also be careful to remember to involve them in activities in the community, special dinners and events in the community, so they feel pulled in and part of the community. So we're looking at this as being a very rich experience.
So next, let me tell you just about the two programs we've found. One, and they're very different. Program one allows a teacher to come from one to three years, depending on his or her fit. Do we like her or him? Do they like us? Is this a good fit? However, that program is not as generous with its money as the second program I'll go into. The first program, which allows a teacher to stay from one to three years, we would have to pay for housing, food, health insurance, teaching materials, and a small monthly stipend. That sounds like a lot in terms of our economic problems going on right now. However, Mr. and Mrs. Spencer Graves, Christie Maul's mom and dad, have apartments. They've already donated an apartment for as long as this person would stay, one to three years. Horace Mann, for Good Weather Transportation, has already donated a beautiful bicycle. And we're hoping that maybe Rob Lyons or someone would, if he twists his arm, would give us a free Passon Rover. So therefore, when you think about what it costs to have a regular teacher, you've got a cream-of-the-crop master teacher that would work in our schools and other schools for about $10,000. Program two is more generous. It's still through Hanban. They would give us close to $30,000. But the problem with that is the teacher may only stay one year, and then they have to go, and we have to be ready, if we want to continue a foreign language program, to have a teacher hired, another teacher, and to move on in. I'm going to apply for both. The deadline is February the 1st, and these are competitive. We may not get either. But if we get both, I would like to work with you and Dr. Gilbert on seeing which, if any, if either, you felt would be a good thing. But we have no guarantee that we're going to get this. Looking at the community reactions, again, I mentioned the Confucius Center with Dr. Guangping Chen, Dr. Jun Da in linguistics. Dr. David Sevier has been helping us with licensure ideas, tips, because this has already been done in Tennessee and a couple of other places. We have an advisory board set up, and before she became DOS, we had Dr. Linda Gilbert, we have Paul Vaughn, Susan Lyons, David Sevier, Jun Da. We're going to ask teachers, parents, and perhaps some children to come in on our advisory board, too. Most of all, we have two fabulous Vanderbilt Education graduate students, Ms. Wen Yan-Joe and Sonya Wang, and they have given donations of a tremendous amount of time. I've spent more time at my kitchen table at 8:00 at night with them at my kitchen table, talking to all these teachers at our two Beijing schools. My son, Boyd Jones, is back from Asia. He consults for Asian firms. He's fluent in Mandarin. He's been helping us. And just all sorts of parents in general who've lent their supports and encourage us. I want to show you just a few quick pictures as we go. This first one, I don't know if you, can you see it? Yeah, besides my big back. This is one of the first things that we had, and notice the father in the doorway. We've had parents, grandparents, babies, and look how interested the kids are. They love this.
And that's what the video conferencing piece looks like. They come in and they sit down, and the screen is really big, and we're watching them. It's a live exchange.
Live, it's live, real time.
Or they're there at 7:00 at night because of the time difference in China.
And they're there 7:00 AM in the morning. Shay Payne, fourth grade, did it come up?
Yep, there it is.
Oh, I'm sorry, okay. Shay Payne is a fourth grade teacher. She's also doing a project with Susan Lyons on literature and folk tales. They're acting them out, learning how to bridge the language gap, summarizing, anticipating their audience. These are all standards we have to meet.
And these are teachers that are stepping up. I'm so proud that they're willing to step forward, and this is extra time for them. You know, they're coming at 7:00 at night, they're doing the extra planning, but they know about the payoff.
And this is one of Shay Payne's children. I just thought it was so dear. She was showing them her American Girl doll. And we have a logo, and this was designed spontaneously by Chathen and Thomas, who couldn't be here tonight. They just went up to the board and drew this, and so this is our logo, Chi America.
And I want to keep that one forever. I love that.
Our future plans. Again, we're not doing action research right now. We're setting it up to go, because with our action research, there are no studies we could find, Wen Yan and I in Vanderbilt University, that speak to, is it effective to have a foreign language in elementary school and to video conference? You're going to want to know, is this worth the time? Is there enough bang for the buck? Through action research, we can give you that definitively. And leadership, we're going to work with Lee Renick of Business Education Partnership. She was here earlier, Leadership Rutherford. We're even a member of the Tennessee Chinese Chamber of Commerce. We went up, Cheryl Harris and Sue Lyons and I, and kind of crashed the meeting, and they love us. They pressed business cards in, they want to come down and speak. It's so exciting. It really is. We had a ball. We felt very odd when we were there, and they welcomed us. I mean, there we are, like, what are you doing? You know? Well, we're teachers from the Discovery School, and we want to start a program. Dr. Ming Wang is very excited for us, too. So what's coming up? Action research, we hope, and leadership. So to summarize?
Okay. Just to summarize, looking at where we are now, starting with video conferencing, we're looking at you to see, does the school system want to take the next we're looking at you to see, does the school system want to take the next step? And so that's where we are. Do you want to take the next step to where we could bring a teacher here as a resident in our school, as a host school, for between one and three years? And that's kind of the decision that we would need to make. Now, we're anticipating that you might have some questions.
We're going to be doing the action research anyway, and we're going to be working with leadership anyway, and we're going to continue the year-long video conferencing about science and social studies and literature. The one thing we don't know about is for you to read the information that we've given you in the folders, and to begin thinking about, is this something that you would like to do? So we welcome questions, and the parents can speak to you also.
And tonight, tonight we were asking for, just to have you to have some information, because this is something that is going on now, and we wanted to make sure that the board had information, and that you would be able to be on the cutting edge and frontline of everything that's going on in the schools. And you're not asked to make a decision tonight, it was just to have the information.
Ms. Phillips and Dr. Buttram have a question that you want to answer. Ms. Phillips and then Dr. Buttram.
Well, wherever this goes, I want to commend you for having the initiative to bring something so creative and exciting as a possibility for our children. I mean, that's just really interesting. It's interesting, yeah, it's really interesting. Innovative, I love that, I love that about it.
Well, I have a great principal who lets me sometimes trip the light fantastic. She just says, keep me informed, Jones. She's a wonderful principal.
Yes, she is.
Ms. Jones, will you anticipate getting the answer for the grants that you'll, they're due in February, did you say?
I think our deadline is like March or April. So we would anticipate that the teacher then who's selected would undergo extensive orientation, it's like a month long in China, then another two weeks in Washington. And at one point, one of us might travel out to have yet another week. So we're looking summer 2010 to get her acclimated and get her ready, or him ready, to start, if we're lucky.
So you will know by spring?
Yes, sir, I will.
All right, well, we'll look forward to hearing about that news.
Thank you.
Hope we get good news.
Oh, I do too. Really do.
Thank you so much, thank you.
Thank you for your time, we really appreciate it. Thank you so much.
I just wanted to say too, that we would, of course, be following all of the guidelines and all of the concerns relative to personnel that would be coming into the schools and working with children. Personnel Department, Mr. Wilkerson, would be definitely involved in looking at anyone that comes into the schools and making sure we're following all of our guidelines.
Yes, sir, I was going to say, if it's okay with the board, we're going to take a five-minute break.
Number 10. Thank you so much, Board, for the recess and we'll convene with the contract.
Okay, the next clause is referrals to the director. This is a standard clause that mimics board policy that you currently have. Does anybody have any changes to that clause?
No.
No. The next clause is loyalty. This is similar to the same clause that you had in the prior agreement. The one thing that I have inserted here is that the board agrees that the director may serve as an adjunct professor at MTSU pursuant to the stipulation set forth above. And that means that caveat above that the work would not materially or substantially interfere with the discharge of the director's duties and responsibilities under the contract. Okay.
Well, how does that differ from being a... I mean, you just teach one class. Is that basically what an adjunct does?
Dr. Gilbert, do you want to explain what that is?
Sure. Typically, an adjunct can teach up to two classes. So that's what my request would be. This is not uncommon at all. We have directors that are doing this. That's basically... We have over 50% of our faculty, our graduate faculty, that are adjunct. And most of those are directors of schools. When I was here previously, that's what I did, is I taught to adjunct. So, for example, for the spring, I'm looking at teaching two of the courses that I would've been teaching. They would be on Wednesday night.
Yeah, they're not Thursdays, right? Or Tuesdays?
No, 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 I would not do that.
I know, I know, I'm just teasing. Yeah, okay.
But what it does is it keeps me current. The other thing is that typically for my classes, I have had Murfreesboro City personnel come in and guest speak. And Katrine Stevens is one of those. And she will tell you that out of every one of my classes, she has gotten a teacher. So there's a real advantage to staying in touch with what's happening at the university.
Thank you, Dr. Gilbert.
Okay, does anybody have any changes to clause 11? Okay, seeing none, I'll go on to clause 12, professional activities. It simply states that the director is encouraged to attend appropriate professional meetings and continuing education at local, state, and national level. It is exactly like what was in the prior agreement. And does anybody have any changes to that clause?
No.
Okay, going on to clause 13, background investigation. It is just indicating that we will do the background investigations that are required under state law prior to Ms. Gilbert... Dr. Gilbert, starting on January 4th. Okay. Tenure rights. Since Dr. Gilbert has worked for the Murfreesboro City School System in the past, under the state law, they... The state law now requires anyone that's worked for a system and left, when they come back, they serve a one-year probationary period upon reemployment with the system unless the board chooses to waive that period. Dr. Gilbert has requested that the period be waived. And I've provided you with information relative to that request, justification of that request. So I have included in here that the board would agree to waive that one-year tenure period. And keep in mind, tenure in the Tennessee system is just tenure as a licensed teacher. It's not saying tenure as a director, a principal. It's just tenure as a licensed teacher.
That seems reasonable.
Ms. Phillips, Mr. Campbell.
That seems reasonable to me.
Is that what we do for all teachers if they leave the system and come back?
I don't know that we've had anyone go to the trouble to request a waiver. But that would be something that I've had to ask Mr. Wilkerson.
We've never had anyone request a waiver of that probationary year upon their return. If they were a tenured teacher prior, no one has requested that. But all teachers that have come back have gained tenure following their probationary year.
Following their probationary period?
Yes.
But there is that option in the law that they can request that it be waived. And you can look at their experience and decide whether to waive it.
Dr. Buttram? Oh, I'm sorry.
Is everybody okay with that clause? Okay. Moving on, is the medical?
Wait, I do have a...
I'm sorry.
I hate to bring this up. I just think we'd need to treat her by the same. I don't know... We haven't had that. So how do you balance whether you treat them the same or not?
Well, I guess you'd look to see if anyone else has requested and what threshold you would have used, that you've used in the past to grant a waiver. Since you've never had anyone ask for a waiver, it's really not... At this point, you're now starting... What criteria are you going to look at? Are you going to look at their past employment experience with the system? What they've been doing while they've been gone? What achievements and accomplishments have they made as a teacher? Those type of issues when you're deciding whether or not to grant a waiver of that probationary period.
So is this going to come up with every new employee we have then after we did that?
It only comes up with employees that used to work for the system and come back to work for the system. And I'm not familiar with...
If they left with tenure.
Yeah, if they left with tenure and they come back to work for the system, there's that one-year probationary period. And the statute is what gives them the right to request a waiver. And I'm not sure how frequently that occurs in our system as far as employees leave, work here for enough to get a tenure, and then leave and then come back. I'm not sure how frequently that really does occur.
Mr. Wilkerson.
We've had four teachers that I can recall right off the bat that left without... All four of those folks. We had approximately, in my memory, four teachers that have left with tenure. And most of those that I recall went to race families. They did not continue their teaching career elsewhere and then returned to Murfreesboro City. Just I thought it might be useful information for the board. These are folks that basically their children were young. They got tenure. They had children. They left until those children were old enough that they thought it was time for them to return to the profession. That's been my experience here.
Had they requested... Wait a minute. They knew when they came back they could request the tenure to be reinstated?
I did not tell them that. And I would assume they did not know that. And because, quite frankly, I wasn't aware that you could request that. These folks were glad to have the opportunity to come back to Murfreesboro City. And in those cases, they did not request the return of that tenure. They happily served their probation period and then were renewed for tenure the following spring.
Mr. Harper?
Does this mean every time we have a new employee come back, then we have to evaluate... The boards kind of have to evaluate whether they merit getting their tenure back or what are we getting into by doing this?
Well, I think if that person requests that tenure to be reinstated, I'm not sure how the law... I think the law says on a case-by-case basis, I think...
Right. Under the statute, it's the board's obligation, if they request a waiver, that the board has to consider that and vote on whether to grant the waiver.
So we've got a judge on every case that comes up like this?
And that's been in the law always. That's always been the way this is written.
Ms. Duggan?
I think the issue here is that typically, teachers aren't aware of what the law says because that's the way it has been for a long time, that you can request that year to be waived. Teachers are not aware of that, basically, is my... In my work with teachers across the state. And even with that, it would have to come... If a teacher does request that, would it not then have to come as a recommendation from the director at that point or from someone?
Yes, the statute reads that the employee may request a waiver of the director of schools. And then the director of schools has to present that request to the board. In this situation, we have the director asking for the waiver, so it's just coming straight to you. But otherwise, they would go through the director. The director would evaluate their experience in all the factors that would be considered and then bring that recommendation to the board.
This is a relatively new law. It's only been in place about three years. It used to be if you retired, you automatically got tenure. The General Assembly added the probationary year in 2006 or 2005. It's fairly recent that this was added to the TCA.
Is this a big deal?
No.
No.
Ms. Baker? And Board, I'd like to make a motion that we go ahead and waive this.
Waive tenure?
Yes, ma'am.
Waive the probationary period?
Yeah, waive the probationary period. Looked like we're going to sit on it for a few minutes or if it's...
I don't think we need to make a motion. I'm sorry, I'm in a row.
Well, we were still dragging on it and passing it back and forth. The best way to go ahead and get something settled is make a motion, vote on it.
I'll second.
There's been a motion and there's been a second. Ms. Ridley, call the row, please, ma'am.
Dr. Andrews?
Aye.
Dr. Buttram?
Yes.
Mr. Campbell?
Yes, ma'am.
Ms. Duggan?
Yes.
Mr. Harper?
Yes.
Ms. Phillips?
Aye.
Ms. Wade?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, the next clause deals with medical evaluation. This is just saying that, under the state law, any employee that comes to work for the school system has to present a certificate showing a satisfactory health record and the results of a tuberculosis test. And that's for all employees coming into the system. The next set of clauses are what y'all always like to refer to as the legalese in my language. This is all the miscellaneous legal clauses in 16. Really, they're very standard, generic clauses that are standard to a contract. I don't know that... Do you have issues with any of those? I'll just ask if that works. And the last clause, well, next to last clause is 17, the contract termination. The only issue I really was going to make sure everyone was on board with is the 90 days written notice of a proposed resignation. Make sure the board was okay with that as a sufficient amount of time for notice to the board before a director resides. That's fairly standard. It's fine.
Looks good.
Okay. Next clause is just who notices provided to, and that is the end of the contract. So with the changes you've already voted on, what I need now from the board is a vote to approve the contract as amended tonight.
I move we approve the contract as amended tonight.
Sir.
There's been a motion and a second. Ms. Ridley, please call the row.
Dr. Buttram?
Yes.
Mr. Campbell?
Yes, ma'am.
Ms. Duggan?
Yes.
Mr. Harper?
Yes.
Ms. Phillips?
Aye.
Dr. Andrews?
Aye.
Ms. Wade?
Yes. Thank you.
Is that all you need, Ms. Baker?
That's all I need for that one. Now I'm up for the next one. Approval of the new board policy, the one I'm bringing to you tonight. You looked at it at the last board meeting regarding the registered sex offender. That policy is now before you for official approval, and then we'll get it implemented into the policy book.
You need a motion now?
Yes.
So move.
Second.
There's been a motion and a second to approve board policy number BO41. Ms. Ridley, call the row.
Mr. Campbell?
Yes, ma'am.
Ms. Duggan?
Yes.
Mr. Harper?
Yes.
Ms. Phillips?
Aye.
Dr. Andrews?
Aye.
Dr. Buttram?
Yes.
Ms. Wade?
Yes.
Ms. Campbell?
Ms. Baker, I assume that if a parent comes in and violates this and they are under the jurisdiction of the local law enforcement agency?
Yes, we would contact Murfreesboro Police Department and their probation officer would be contacted. And I've gotten the contacts to find all that necessary information.
Do you have a question, Ms. Phillips?
Okay. Dr. Tucker?
Thank you. And if you would look behind tab three, we will see information regarding Race to the Top: Opportunities for Tennessee. This particular piece of information has to do with a national initiative. And this Race to the Top is being presented to states throughout this nation. There's a memorandum of agreement that has to be signed by every school system in the state of Tennessee, the board chair, and the local organization that represents teachers if the local education agency is going to be a part of the Race to the Top for the state of Tennessee. This memorandum of agreement has many components within one area called the scope of the project. And that's the number-one area, which is considered as the major focus. What you have before you explains what the memorandum of agreement will include. And that's what I'm going through. And I would ask if you, as we go through, if you would allow me to go completely through one item, one page at a time. And I will stop at the end of that page to entertain any questions on that page. By doing it in that manner, we might be able to proceed pretty quickly through it and still have all of your questions answered. If you'll look at the first where it shows the Race to the Top, it just gives that information telling you when we actually received this. I went to a meeting that was held by the Commission of Education where superintendents from across the state came and heard information and saw this presentation. So I requested it because this was what was presented to us, and I wanted to share the same information with you. Going now to the second one, it just gives us about what it is, the stimulus package in terms of being a part of the national program for the American Recovery and Reinvestment Act, better known as ARA. And this gives us a rigorous college and career standards path that Tennessee has embarked upon with the Tennessee Diploma Project. But also, it extends itself and goes a little deeper in that it also entails collaboration with 49 other states and territories in the United States. If you will go to the next one, it says, "Go bold." What is being rewarded is, by definition also included in the governor's statement, that we want to get the best people in our schools. We want to have the best opportunities for our children. And in doing so, we're going bold. And that's what's being proclaimed throughout this nation. And it started with President Obama, who projected this and who signed it into action through an act of Congress. And it gave... This was done in February of 2009, so it's just come down the pike. And we're having opportunities now to apply. The critical part is, we received the presentation, and there is a turnaround time. We are to inform our boards. And on tomorrow, I will be meeting with MEA to explain to the teachers this aspect. But I felt an obligation that I needed to present to you first in that you needed to have firsthand information in that you are the Board of Education. In signing this, there are some commitments that will be made. Those commitments are explained in here, and the details of which will also be explained. The information has to be signed. The memorandum of agreement has to be signed and returned to the State Department of Education for Tennessee by December 18th. When we received this, we were told that we would have until December 18th. Subsequent to that, we have been requested, if possible, to have it returned by December 15th. And so I said, I called and let them know that we would only have our board meeting on December 15th. And of course, we still were able to... We are still able to abide within that December 18th timeline, which doesn't give us a lot of time. But it does give me an opportunity to present to you and then present to the Education Association, looking at the State Fiscal Stabilization Fund. And from this fund, we see the... That there's a division. There's a certain amount that will go to governors. And we're looking at 53.6 billion dollars. And you'll see a division from there. It goes on down, talking about the 48.6 billion to governors. And then the secretary is $5 billion. And when you get down under the area of the secretary, you'll see Race to the Top, $4 billion. And that's what we're talking about. This is very comprehensive in that there are certain kinds of things that must be done. And let me ask you if you have any questions before I go to the next page. And I will keep going until you stop me, okay? What does this mean for us? It means that, for Tennessee, and it also means for our local education agency, that we must craft a plan that commits the state to a rigorous set of expectations. And along with those expectations are standards. And those standards are also included in the core standards. And those core standards are what's been approved by the 49 territories and states in the United States. Capitalizes on the strengths and also while capitalizing on those strengths, we're addressing the challenges and the needs that we have in terms of accelerating our ongoing work. It puts us at another level. It doesn't allow us to have status quo. It takes us beyond what we have expected before. It takes us to a new level. We look at what we can do in terms of achieving with regard to the Tennessee Diploma Project. And in this, it has incorporated the standards that will be the thrust behind the efforts to move our students to the level where they can enter the workforce ready to work and also into colleges ready to learn and being prepared for our future leaders. It builds... It also... It builds on the capacity of the school districts, as well as it asks for whatever amount of money that it takes to accomplish those. In other words, this is a little bit different from what we normally get. This asks us to do certain things. But then, in light manner, it gives back the resources and it gives the wherewithal that would be needed in order to take those bold steps that are going to be required if a state applies. And let me interject this, which I didn't say at the beginning. There are only going to be about 10 states that are going to qualify for this, this money that is out for the Race to the Top. Tennessee stands in good stead of being able to access this. And that's why the application is going out. Every school district within the state of Tennessee, and I believe there are 136 districts, they're being asked to sign this. Now, at one point, it had that you could take part of it or you could take it all. But that was then deleted, and you either have to take it all or you take none. And if a school system does not sign and does not become a part of it, there would be no additional funds that would be available to that school system beyond what the basic formula for the schools would be. And in that, there are a number of areas that are being discontinued, but will be picked up under the Race to the Top. We are told that we are in good stead in terms of good standing with the possibility of possibly obtaining one of those grants because of our extended use of the T-VAS data, because of our extended use of a system called SAS, which is a part of what Dr. Bill Sanders is working with, and which gives us the longitudinal study that gives us data over time and gives a student performance over time. So we look at that. We're looking at our... Enhancing our chances for being one of those states. In addition, our rigorous standards that we're having and the new standards that have been adopted by the Tennessee Diploma Project also put us in good stead. What does this mean for us? Well, it's competition. And so it's all about competition. So the states will be in competition too. Why must we move in this direction? As was said earlier in the message from President Obama and Secretary Duncan, status quo will not be able to work anymore. We will not be able to do that. They're looking for schools and systems that are going to break the mold, schools and systems that are going to be challenging to our students and cause them to reach new levels. However, with that, there are four assurances that must be agreed to. And within this memorandum of agreement, those four assurances are spelled out in addition to what is here. College and work-ready standards and high-quality valid and reliable assessment. We already have that in place in terms of Tennessee. Number two, pre-K to higher ed, and that's that P-20 that's going to be talked about in the memorandum of understanding. And they have to meet certain principles that are in the Competes Act. And this is dealing with school systems that are competing for certain grants. It's also dealing with rigorous standards and different kinds of improved areas for students to reach new goals and so... And new standards having been set, and they have to achieve those. Number three, teacher effectiveness. This is spelled out on the teachers as leaders, as I spoke about earlier. And it also has certain requirements that are going to be a part of that. Intensive support and effective interventions for those lowest-performing schools. And right now, those lowest-performing schools here in Tennessee are called the high priority schools, those schools who are not making AYP and have not made AYP over a number of years. And so we're looking at things that are going to be able to... Ideas, strategies, implementation processes that will be able to assist those schools in reaching their adequate yearly progress. Now, in case you have a lot of questions, and I'll be more than happy to go over in detail with you, because what I have done is, in order to support each one of those four areas, and I won't go into detail with you on that now, but I have different information that I have garnered in terms of researching about America Competes. That's the one that I mentioned. That's an act that was passed by Congress. Also... Also, a part of this is going to be that Tennessee STEMS project, which is dealing with the science, technology, and you're going to have to have the engineering part, the mathematics, all of that goes together for the STEMS project. So that's a part of, and that's coming up next. So any additional information, I'll be more than happy to go into detail with you, but I don't want to belabor the issue here. If we look at the race to the top priorities, we're going to look at absolute priorities, the comprehensive approach to those four assurances that I spoke about earlier. Those, there's going to have to be a definite focus there. Also, the emphasis on STEM, which is what I just spoke about just a minute ago. And then the innovations in terms of the invitation to the priorities. These are different things, the data system, looking at the P-20, looking at what we're doing in terms of continuous education. All of those, all of those are part of this memorandum of understanding. It's just these are the PowerPoint presentations that explained what's contained within this memorandum of understanding. When you get down to your point distribution, it tells there are total five hundred points. And within that point, the pie has been divided in various aspects and it shows the percentages for each of those areas. If you'll look and you will see that we have even taken out as a three percent that STEM, but that's a component and it's a component of that five hundred point system. But if you look down at the standards and assessment, you have fourteen points. You look at the data systems, you have nine points, nine percent points, nine percentages, rather, of the amount of points that would be needed, which would be five hundred. So you do the percentages on those intact and that would tell you exactly how many points each one would be garnering for that five hundred point system. I have information here about the core common standards that I had spoken about, about the fifty-nine states having signed on to those. And it's real important that we understand that, and I'm not trying to convince us, I'm not trying to convince you, I'm reporting. I'm just giving, I'm kind of like the mailman, I'm just delivering the mail. And it's up to you to determine what you want to do with this. And this information was given to me and I'm giving it to you. You have, you know, the decision is within your hands in terms of whether or not you want to do this. It did not call for board action in terms of the board approving it, but it did call for the board's, board chair's signature. So whatever way you all want to handle that is fine with me. But I just wanted to make sure I presented that so that everybody would have an opportunity. Building the application, we're looking at, these are opportunities for Tennessee, we're building the application. Tennessee has the compelling story, including the T-VAS data, and that's what I was speaking of earlier, the Tennessee Diploma Project. Looking at the Common Core Standards, those comprise our major selling points in that would allow us to be competitive with other states because we have those things already in place and many of the states do not have those things in place. Looking at the application, there has to be a signing of the memorandum of understanding with the state, the superintendent, the board chair, the local teachers' union, a must-sign in order to participate, participation versus involvement. The LEAs only participating will qualify, those who are participating, that's full participation, and they did, they did an addendum to this. At one point, they had said, if you participate in part, no, you've got to participate in the whole thing. They revised that, so it has to be total participation as opposed to involvement that they had at one point. And as is stated here, it has to be signed and not only signed, it has to be delivered and in their hands by the eighteenth, which doesn't give us a lot of time. Also, if you want to have more information regarding standards, I just felt like I needed to have every, everything available to you. If you wanted to have questions to ask about Tennessee's Accountability Chart, it tells where we are with regard to those low-performing schools or those schools that are high priority schools. And in the national document, they call it low-performing schools, but it equates to our high priority schools. And we look at this and we look at the accountability model. The accountability model says, certain things must happen over a period of time and if these things don't happen, then these are the consequences that will occur. So they're embracing our accountability model as well as all of the other standards that we have put forth in terms of what we're requiring. Here is the Tennessee Diploma Project that I had spoken of earlier. And if you have any information, if you have any questions about that, I'd be glad to share with you also. Now, what are you signing up for? You're signing up for standards and assessment, complete participation in the new state standards and assessments. Now, the Tennessee Diploma Project is driving most of those because that has already been done and that is being accepted. However, as I had mentioned to you earlier about the Common Core Standards, and this will tell exactly what the Common Core Standards are, they also fold into the Tennessee Diploma Project. We're working in terms of building a better system for our children to achieve. It is stated that the monies that are a part of this will undergird, will give the infrastructure that is needed in order to build those bold new plans. And lack of participation means you don't get any funds. It's just, you're, none participation, none fund, none funding. Also, the other part, and it talks about, and these go directly along with the memorandum of understanding, the standards and assessment, the data systems. What you're signing up for continues, and it's dealing with great teachers. Let's look at this. The Race to the Top Guidelines require a new annual teacher and principal evaluation. Now, that's not currently in place, but that's what this is going to be requiring. Also, it uses student growth as one of the multiple measures, how they will be evaluating the teacher performance. It's linked to all human capital decisions, tenure, promotion, retention, compensation. It is designed to collaboratively work with teachers and principals. And that's spelled out here also. It also emphasizes those schools that are, the turnaround schools, those schools that are improving, new innovations, interventions for schools failing the AYP that I've spoken of earlier. Bold reform required for corrective action and restructuring. And here, when we're talking about that, we're talking about the Tennessee Accountability Chart, spells it out exactly what happens year after year when certain benchmarks are not met and consistently not met. And it tells about the spiraling down in terms of if schools are not able to make AYP over a continuous period of time. Next, what will we ask of you? An aggressive timeline, as soon as possible, and this is as soon as possible for us, excuse me. We are giving this information to you. Bottom line, deadline for us to get this back is December eighteenth. And they're expecting to get their application in by January nineteenth of two thousand and ten. Chance to make history, this is telling us the role that we play in terms of making history. This comes from President Obama. It's time to stop just talking about education reform and start actually doing it. It's time to make education America's national mission. And that was said November four of this year by President Obama. So, do you have any questions?
Ms. Tompkins?
I personally be all for this, if you and Dr. Gilbert think it's the thing to do. But during your comment, she described this as a grant, the money. And I'm always concerned when we have grants that it's going to saddle us with something to pay for out of local funds after the grant runs out. So do you have any idea about that as far as, is this going to involve employing a lot of people, buying equipment, or what's the financial obligation associated with this?
Well, the actual details of all of the commitments, and I'm just going to be truthful with you, are not there.
We don't know.
We don't know the details. But we do know that if you don't participate, you won't be receiving any funds beyond that basic formula funding.
I just am hesitant, though, that we go out and hire a lot of people with this grant money and then in the next year, there's no grant money and we've got all these people or...
I think what a lot of it has to do with is restructuring current funding aspects that we have. For instance, in looking at this, we, I talked with the commissioner, there were several questions that I had. So I called the commissioner and then I talked with Commissioner Webb. And then I also later called and talked with Assistant Commissioner Green because I wanted to make sure the questions that I had were answered. And these are some things that will not be recurring under the current era funding that we have. The extended contracts are no longer going to be funded. The resource census money that comes from the state will not be. The internet connectivity will not be. Safe schools, there are a number of things that we're not going to have funding for at the state level. If perchance, we're able to get the grant from the national level, then yes, we would be able to do so. But it's just like, all funding that we receive from the federal government, basically, is a lot of, is passed through money and they are grants. And ESEA is a grant, and that's Title I. I mean, it comes under an act, though. The difference is that it is an act of Congress and it was signed by the president. We have to be careful when we hire a lot of additional people not knowing the fullness of what is going on. But I think by the time that hiring policy would come in practice, we'd know the extent of everything connected with this. It's kind of between a rock and a hard place. If you, if you don't be a part of it, you're taking our system out of the possibility of receiving funding, massive funding. Because half of the money that is received from the Race to the Top will go directly to LEAs. And if we, if we received it, that would do a great deal to boost in areas that are going to be cut because state funding is going to be kind of low this year. And the revenues not being what they want them, it just puts you in a real hard situation. But it takes you out of the loop in terms of being able to receive funding if we don't sign.
Dr. Butler?
Okay, I think at this point, this is at the state level. You need us to just agree to be on board, but the state will end up having to apply for the grant. If they get the grant, then they're going to turn around and say to the LEAs, here's our grant proposal, you write us, just like they did with the IRA a couple of years ago. But I'm all for supporting this and then when the state lets us know if they get it, then I think we can move from there as to what, how much we would need and what we could do with it. But thank you for doing all the research on it.
Thank you.
But I know it's at the state level right now.
It's at the state level. And we only, as local education agencies, we only sign that, yes, if this state is awarded the granting, we will. And it's competitive. It's not just, you know, you apply for, it's competitive. If this is awarded to the state, we as local education agencies agree that we will support the state in what they're doing and then we will do our part of what is asked of us. Now, and the monies will be allocated based on the formula, that it's not connected to Title I, but it's based on the formula for allocation of the Title I funding. That's, it's based on that. It just, it's a difficult situation and I understand it. It just puts us in a situation where if we don't, we're possibly denying ourselves of monies that could help us tremendously. If we do, we're agreeing to something that we don't know the all of the ins and the outs of, but the decision has to be, has to be made.
Ms. Phillips and then Dr. Andrews?
You did a wonderful presentation. I had no idea you could talk so fast. That was really funny. Okay, it was great, though. We went right through. Any just ballpark figuring of how much money we might get, were we to get?
It would, it would be based on the formula, and I'm not sure of what the Title I amount of money that we get normally. Do you happen to have a ballpark figure, Mr. Anderson?
I'm not sure of the amount that we get. Miss, Miss, you may know that you've got ARIF funds added in there now too.
Do you remember the amount of Title, Title funds?
Not off the top of my head.
No, I don't remember either.
I was just wanting to get excited about a whole big hunk of money, title money coming to us.
Mr. Anderson, it's total, it's total, it's total dollars, three point three million dollars. That includes my DVA.
Right. But this won't necessarily be the same as that, it's just going to be distributed by the same formula.
By the same formula. It will not be, it would have nothing to do with those funds, but it would just be using that formula.
Dr. Andrews?
A move that we sign on.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor of signing on? Say aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, and I'll have it ready for you, Ms. Wade, immediately following the meeting.
Thank you, ma'am. If it's okay with the board, there's a couple of items on here that we can dispense to maybe January, like item C, E, and G, because we can get Ms. Ridley to pull the board after Dr. ...
Conachal.
And F. If that's okay, we can put those off and just go right to number D and then H, and that'll take care of our business for tonight. Ms. Duggan?
Discussing the director's transition, we probably need to hear from Dr. Tucker and Dr. Gilbert, but I know you've already had conversations and I'm sure you'll have many more between now and Dr. Gilbert's first day on the job, official first day. However, I would like, if you see a need for Dr. Tucker to stay on for two or three more days while Dr. Gilbert's actually in the official position as our director, I would like to see us provide that, just so there's plenty of opportunity for the discussion and the sharing that might need to go on for that to be able to happen.
Is there any more discussion about that?
You want to make a motion, I'll second it.
I make a motion that we engage Dr. Tucker for up to five days, beginning on January four, to be here to just share all that she's learned over the past few months. And we greatly appreciate your help, but that would be my motion, up to five days.
Second.
Has been a motion and a second discussion?
Is that, do you think that's going to be adequate time?
It's fine with me. The thing that I'm glad that you said five days is because we have a, we have a meeting, I arranged for a meeting with the State Department for us to be able to have the data discussed at the state level. Dr. Connie Smith is going to go over the information to make sure we are, as I hand the ball over to Dr. Gilbert, that we're on the same page in terms of what the needs are. I'm willing to work that period of time or whatever, you all decide.
And it wouldn't necessarily have to be five days consecutive, just so it fits with your schedule.
Okay.
Ms. Phillips?
I'm curious as to whether it might not be beneficial to have Dr. Tucker stay longer. I don't know how much information needs to be shared, not having served in that position. You know, two weeks seems reasonable to me. I'm fine with five days. I'm just saying, what's in Dr. Gilbert's best interest? Whatever, but you know, because it's a huge responsibility. Do you have a comment, Dr. Gilbert? May I ask her?
Well, you've already asked, so we'll get the answer.
I'm comfortable with whatever the board wants. I feel fairly confident that five days will be fine, but that's entirely up to you all.
You ready to vote here?
Okay.
That's fine.
Ms. Ridley? There's a motion on the table, five days.
That's fine.
You know, board, you can always, if something comes up in five days and it's not done, you're not sealed. You can always ask.
She has threatened to keep me two years.
Yeah, there you go.
All in favor of the five days to start off? That's fine. If you need it, vote of aye.
Aye.
Thank you. And Dr. Tucker, let me say, before we conclude this meeting, and we have one more item, let me say, it has been wonderful working with you as a board chair. And I won't speak for the board because some of them spoke at the last meeting, but certainly I'm appreciative to what you've brought to the job for us and how you've worked with us and worked with Ms. Bacon. I appreciate you renaming the central office, you're the leadership staff. I appreciate you renaming the central office, your, the leadership staff. It, it sounds good. I'm looking forward to the camaraderie between you and Dr. Gilbert to bring our new director in and show her the ropes that you've found out since you've been here, and I know the transition will be very smooth. I wouldn't think it would be any other way, the smooth.
Well, I appreciate that, and, and that's what I want to make sure, that we have a seamless transition and that we can move very, very smoothly into the change, because our children are the ones who will be the beneficiaries of a smooth change. I want to also commend the staff as a whole, but then my leadership team in particular in terms of, of working with me. I was received very well, and I could have easily not been received well, and I'm appreciative to them. I could not ask them to do anything but that they were willing to do. They were ready to do and helped tremendously. So I am very appreciative of the leadership team and everything that was done, and also the principals have been so receptive. And the teachers that I have met, I have found to be, to be very, very enjoyable, and, and it has been a great pleasure for me. I couldn't do the things that I had been able to do, though, without Ms. Ridley. Ms. Ridley has been like a right arm, and I'm thankful, I'm grateful, I've been blessed.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, discussion of board assessment is on here. Is there any discussion or...
Take ninety seconds.
All right.
I'm not asking for a show of hands, but if there's anyone who has not turned in their board assessment, please do that. I have had conversation with TSBA. They do not have to do the rollout of our assessment once the data is collected. If we want someone else other than TSBA to share that information with us at our retreat, we can choose whomever we want to. And I know that there are individuals at MTSU that could do that with us and for us, and they might even do it as a public service, so there would not be the cost there. But there's, should not be a problem as far as the rollout, but they just have to have the data. And if they don't have input from all seven of us, it really becomes a very difficult situation.
Thank you, Ms. Duggan. We do ask that if you have not, as you said, you don't have to raise your hand, but please get it in the mail this week so we can get that assessment done. It can only help us at the retreat and also help this be a smooth, seamless transition for Dr. Gilbert to hear about the board that she's getting ready to start to work with. Uh, Dr. Tucker?
I just wanted to say, I wanted to thank the board. I wanted to thank you for your leadership, and I wanted to thank each board member, because I've had an opportunity to talk with each of you, and I appreciate you. I also want to express appreciation to my husband, who has been so supportive of me and been to every board meeting, and I appreciate all of, everybody's working together for the benefit of children.
Behind every good woman, there's a Superman.
You can pay me later. Well, thank you, Mr. Campbell. You take that money later. Is there anything else to board that could fall under the business, and then we'll adjourn? Uh, Ms. Phillips?
Ms. Baker, would you share with them that, real quick, that I'm going to be sending them, I...
Okay, there is a video clip that was shared at the TSBA convention, that because our meetings are aired live and on, are broadcast on TV, copyright issues prohibit us from showing that particular clip at the meeting, but Ms. Phillips will email it to all the board for you to review, and then she'll discuss it at, at a meeting.
Thank you.
Just want you to know what you're getting, that's all.
Thank you.